Okay, great. Okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting for Tuesday, October 17th will come to order. We have two public hearings, the first two items on the agenda. The first is the continued public hearing for Varsity Wireless. And I know a lot of you folks are here for that. We had a -- normally, we had a request by the applicant for a continuance. Normally, when we get a request for a continuance, we don't hear the subject at all. But I think tonight, the circumstances are a little bit different because so many of you have come for that specific reason. And before we start, I just want to have a discussion with members of the board of whether they feel it's appropriate to hear the discussion tonight. So if you bear with us a minute or two, we just want to talk through it and then we'll get back to the matter of business. So what does everybody think? Should we hear input from the public or not?
I think if the public is here and wants to comment on it, I think we have an obligation to hear from them. And I think it would be a shame to have a lot of people leaving on that. So I'm in favor of hearing.
Okay.
I would say where we haven't officially been in a hearing yet, except for the fact that we're ready to hear from people who are here, I would just say that if the applicant is not here, that we're not in a position to answer questions necessarily about some of the specifics of their design and things like that, where there may be questions that you may want to pose to the applicant and have them answer, rather than questions that we're here for. If people want to make statements and things like that, I think that's perfectly fair. And I think the applicant can watch the video, listen to the tape, and address those. If the next time that people want to ask specific questions about, you know, the heights and the -- how much coverage and things like that, which is, you know, in their giant packet, then I'd say come back as well to the next. But I don't have a problem hearing people's comments today, just understanding what the -- we might have some limitations.
Agreed.
Okay. Pete?
I agree. I think if people have come, we should hear the comments. And I wish the applicant was here.
Chris?
Yeah, no, I agree too. I mean, there's too many people here to turn away again, but I will also echo what Ayton said, is our ability to answer questions will be limited. It's unfortunate that we don't have a presentation, because I think that it could be a lot of information that the audience might have incomplete information. So you'll have to bear with us. I don't want to have things be said that really are inaccurate, so we'll have to perhaps deal with that as it comes along.
So we will hear you out, but with that ground rule that we can't answer every question. Everybody okay with that? Okay, great. So if somebody would like --
Can I just go on record? So the applicant, when he did request this, asked if he needed to attend. I told him that typically, when the request is asked, evidence is not heard, and his attendance wouldn't be needed in that case. And I did not anticipate this. So his request is that the continuance be granted without the need for its representation to attend and to contact him immediately if his representation is required. And I don't feel as though you're saying his representation is required based on those comments, but...
I think that's a fair comment, that in fact, if there's something factual that somebody asks a question of, we will defer that because we're not in capacity to do that. So if anybody would like to get up and speak, if you could come to the mic, identify yourself and where you live, and make your statement. If it is a question, we may, as we said, table it and, you know, pass it off until the next meeting.
This one?
Yes, this one, yes.
31 Bridges Lane. And I do want to ask a question.
And your name is?
Lisa Roberts.
Right, okay.
Was this -- this was -- this conversation was begun two weeks ago? Is that right?
It was four weeks ago, right?
I believe four.
Two meetings ago.
Right.
Yeah, two meetings, four weeks.
Was anyone else here besides the applicant, or is it just him?
There was one neighbor here.
First meeting, who spoke in favor of it, and the applicant had his engineer and so forth. That was it.
Because this is the first we've all heard of this, so we're in kind of shock right now, and I think they would all agree that we're in shock. We had no idea this was happening, and thankfully, someone brought it to our attention in casual conversations. So we're still trying to figure out how to go about discussing this. So I think we're all in agreeance that we don't like the idea of this, because it's in a residential neighborhood and there's more appropriate places this could be put. We have high-power lines going not even a half a mile away, up Bruin Hill, which would give the elevation a broader reach for the cell signal, and no one would see it. If it's where it is, I'm going to see it right out my front door every time I walk out. And when the leaves fall, it's going to be even worse. It's going to look very funny. And I think we all just wonder, and I know you can't answer this, why other places weren't looked at and pursued, and how this all happened. Can you answer any of that? No? Okay.
It's a question for the applicant.
Okay.
But it is part of the process. So Pete, can you --
I would just comment, I would recommend, I mean, these are recorded. Some of that was discussed at previous meetings. They did discuss kind of generality, what their approach was in looking for locations and trying to find, you know, this is on private property. So they try to look for public property, they try to look for private property, and you have to meet with people and get permission or get a lease with somebody. So they did discuss it. I mean, I think your question would be best answered by them, but I would suggest, if you have the time and the inclination, that you can go back and try to -- it's a lot to try to go back and look at those. But so, you can wait, but they did discuss that.
Okay.
I'm not in a good place to summarize it.
Yeah. Was the town approached by other -- for other locations, such as the top of Bruin Hill, or someone just brought up, I think, the dump or the Sharper's Pond Road?
I think, yeah, you're stretching a little bit too far, because it gets into looking at maps and looking at the very specifics, I think, at that point. I think Ayton made a very good point, is it might be painful to rewind the tape, but that actually is probably the best thing. And then, at the next meeting, we will be glad to bring it up again.
Because it's readily available online. You can see it. And also, I think in our last meeting, they did the balloon test, where they actually show what all the views were from a lot of different perspectives. And it was pretty comprehensive, too. So it's interesting to hear what you have to say. I'd love to hear a reply from the applicant.
I'd also say, I think we received a bunch of information from the applicant when they first came here. And I believe, Jean, is -- am I correct that this information is still available online in the public records of the agenda? So there is some written material as well?
There is. We passed around that, the page on Google Docs.
So you saw the continuance request come in today, I believe, so...
I heard about it, and then quick -- are you -- Jean?
Yes.
Yes, I emailed you, and you're so nice to get back to me so late.
So the agenda links to all the materials that were submitted for that meeting.
Okay.
You also can come to the planning department at any time and go through the whole hard copy file. And North Andover CAM posts the meetings, so you can go back and watch any meeting through the North Andover CAM website. And if anybody needs help with any of that, just contact our office.
Okay. Well, just curious, was his requirement to just alert the actual abutters? Because I'm just surprised none of -- and our guilty is not --
300 feet, right. So 300 feet from the property lines is the abutter mailing.
He owns the property, Jason.
With the property that the wireless facility is proposed on.
He writes and shows that, and then he lives right next to it.
Yeah, let's -- we'll keep going in conversation, if you could, just because this is on TV. It's quite a follow, otherwise, so...
All right. We're just all shell-shocked, trying to figure this whole thing out. So now, does anyone else want to hear?
So nothing's going to be decided today. This hearing will continue for another date. The applicant will be here. Anyone who wants can come and ask questions or address the board. It would be helpful for us, to the extent that people have information and thoughts that they want to give to us now, that we can think about those, so that we can have questions as well. So that would be helpful today, at least, from my perspective.
My name is Ken Lindar. I live at 160 Foster Street. I'm concerned, because, as the lady just said, we didn't receive notice of the prior meeting as well, and we are abutters, direct abutters of Mr. Young. So I'm not quite sure how you could have held the meeting without us getting notice. So if anything, I think the process should start all over again, now that people are getting noticed that this has happened. Secondly, my understanding is that the meeting has not been continued. We are having the meeting today, and the applicant is not here. So how can you even process any of this without the applicant being here? Shouldn't they -- shouldn't somebody be here, or shouldn't the petition be dismissed? I mean, ordinarily, an applicant is present at the meeting that's being held. The applicant isn't here, you didn't grant the continuance.
I guess is -- are you asking a question or making a request?
I'm asking a question, yeah.
I guess, I totally explained it at the start, was that the applicant requested a continuation. We felt inappropriate under the circumstances, since it was done so late, that we would hear input from the public, but we wouldn't answer specific questions. And then we would continue in two weeks. If you don't think that's a reasonable answer, I'm not sure what we're --
Well, no, no. The applicant in their letter asked you whether or not they should be here today or not. I don't know whether or not anybody from the board responded to them.
So I guess is -- I'm still perplexed. I'm not sure what you want.
Well, my question, the applicant isn't here today. They should be here, so...
Well, yeah, we would have preferred they'd been here, but they're not here, so...
Okay, well, that's one issue. The other issue is that we never received notice of the prior meeting.
Well, we will look and see if they comply with the statutory requirements or not. They had told us that they did. If they didn't, we will investigate that and make them compliant. But you're here now, so you are aware of it.
And do you have copies of whatever -- you said they were photographs of --
Yes.
Do you have copies of that available to us?
Yes, Jean, it's online, yes.
Do you have copies of -- you have photographs here? Everything's online?
Everything's online, or you can make an appointment to meet with the planning department and get copies of anything. They're all public records, so they're all available.
What is the webpage that's online?
The town, the government, the town's website has everyone's agenda for all of the public boards. And so if you go to a planning board agenda and open that up and drill down, it's the same things that we get before we go to every meeting. It gives a chief of documents that we all have available to us for every meeting. So for every planning board meeting, there's...
So if you click on one of these blue -- you'll see this when you go to the website, a pull-up, the agenda, click on the blue link, the documentation.
And all the documents that are available will be there. And if you have questions on them, I mean, you know, Jean is available for any of those things. And you can also go, again, go to CAM, too, and actually watch the meetings.
So the general website is northandoverma.gov. And as Chris was saying, you can go to the planning department's website or the planning board website and get the links.
When is the planning board open every day?
The planning department?
Eight to 4:30, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, eight to noon, and Tuesday, eight to six. And again, those are all posted on the website.
Hi, I'm Megan Amwan. I'm 242 Foster. And obviously, like everybody else, I'm very concerned that I've gotten a lot of information and I'm very against this project. I realize that they have five zoning laws to have to receive variances for. And I would like to know your standard of giving variances when there's community protests? Like, what is your standard for allowing a variance?
We don't give variance, because that's zoning order.
Okay, see, I don't even know.
So yeah, they're basically --
So what is your -- what is your role?
Maybe we could explain. We have a cell bylaw. We're the planning board, and we give a special permit that allows the use of that. And our zoning bylaw has certain requirements in terms of setback requirement, distance from, you know, fall zones, and it's a very lengthy list of requirements, and it's a lengthy list of inputs that they have to provide and standards that they have to meet. The reason why they're going to the ZVA first is they don't comply with the zoning. So they have to go to the ZVA and get relief, and that's their job. This is ours, and we don't, you know, we don't really get to opine on what they do.
So if, let's say zoning becomes a non-issue, they pass their variances, is there some sort of roadblock for them in this committee? Like, what -- I don't know.
Well, if, basically, we cannot approve anything that's not in compliance with zoning unless there's a variance. If they provide, if they give the variances and they give the zoning relief, then it comes to the planning board. We have made a decision, I think, that we are not going to make a decision until after they make the decision, because they come first. And then what we do is, based on what our bylaw says, we review all the information and we make a decision of whether it's appropriate or not.
Okay.
You know, there's certain criteria we can use to make our decision, and there's certain things that we can't do. We can't make a decision, for example, in the health issues. That's not within our jurisdiction.
Right. So are you aware of the town hosting a tower, of the ability of the town to host a tower on town land? Like, is that something that could potentially happen if...
Well, I mean, there is one case where that exists today, as you know, up in Osborne Hill. But the, I think to deal with the specifics of why town land is appropriate or not for this specific facility is something that we should discuss at our meeting. I think that'd be a, you know, as we said, a more appropriate thing, because it ends up being very detailed.
Okay. So I just, for the record, want to say, I believe there are better alternatives, and I'm not denying that there may be a need in the area for cell service, but I believe that there has been hardly any input, I mean, examination of other sites. I mean, I don't know the legality, but like Lisa said, the high tension power lines are very close. The town of North Andover owns a good portion of that land, and it's higher elevated, so it would reach more. And it's already zoned for utilities, so we wouldn't have to go through all of these variances. I mean, I don't know exactly what it's zoned for, but clearly, something different than residential. So I just, I guess, state for the record, very against this project, very angry that I wasn't notified, and yeah, thank you for listening.
One question. Excuse me. Are you within the 300-foot abutters?
I am about 900 foot.
Okay.
But I would still expect to be notified. It's in my sight.
Just one other. I thought you had some very good questions. Thank you for taking the time to come here. The rules that we have to follow in the zoning bylaw that the chairman mentioned, the zoning bylaws are on the town webpage. There's a section on wireless service facilities, Section 8.9. And if you go through that, you asked about the criteria that lists the criteria under the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alain Pinnberry. I live at 160 Foster Street, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the underlying zoning, that my property and my abutting neighbor's property, Mr. Young, which is the subject of this cell tower, share in common, and that is a 61A, which is an agricultural classification. What's very unique about this property, and you may or may not know, is that it was one of the original farms in North Andover, Foster Park, and been in continued agricultural use since our house was built in 1790. It must have meant something to the community when Mr. Foster died, because the community made the election to spend the money and buy Mr. Foster's farm across the street out of 61A. There's a lovely soccer field there, where the children in our neighborhood play soccer. And there are important trails that run through the Foster Farm, that community members take all the time to look at birds and enjoy this really quite incredible historic landscape. What I'm, I'm just confused, I think, as an abutter, as a longtime resident in North Andover, I've lived in my home for 35 years, that this really pristine cultural landscape wouldn't mean more to this community. I just feel that there've got to be other places for cell towers than the private property that, again, is zoned 61A for agricultural purposes. I've collaborated with Mr. Young for probably 25 years. We're active farmers. We pasture sheep. We pasture cows. We raise bees. We farm lots of fruits and vegetables. And we raise chickens, and our neighborhood enjoys...
If I may, just want to ask a question, and Jean pointed to you, is Chapter 61A actually isn't a zoning article, it's an overlay where you get reduced taxes if you have an agricultural use. But if that property, where the thing is proposed and has an agricultural use, and they haven't said they wanted to get out under 61A, I...
I made a note to talk to the council.
Yeah, we need to check on that, because that actually, if that property isn't under 61A, I don't think they can do this.
We file a certificate every year. We are active farmers. And in so doing, we have preserved this cultural landscape. And I guess my argument to this board, which governs land use, is to value that pursuit above and beyond almost anything. We have, we have very few of these cultural landscapes left in North Andover, much less Massachusetts. But we're going to talk about our town now. And I cannot tell you, as I, you know, work in my own garden, how many cars slow down to take a look at the cows, to enjoy the sheep, and to take in this view, which is really pristine and completely unspoiled. And I just think we all ought to think very long and hard about our, we do share a duty as civic, as citizens of this community, to make sure that this is preserved in perpetuity. It's too important to let, to let this go in the name of, quote, "progress" or "economic return," or whatever, or whatever seems to be guiding this, I think, very mis, you know, not well-understood vision for what should happen on the Foster Farm. And I can tell you, because I knew Earl Foster quite well, we were good friends, even though we came from very different worlds, he would be very upset. He worked really hard to keep his farm and his family his whole life, and collaborated with us, because he knew we would work hard to make sure it stayed in agricultural use. Steve has worked really, works really hard as a farmer in central Mass, and comes home and works even harder to make sure his farm stays in agricultural use. So I'm really not sure what's going on here. This is what this is. It's Andover, North Andover's sort of last sort of cultural landscape. Think long and hard before you change that, please.
Hi, my name is Bob Chase, and I live on 31 Vestway. I'm quite empathetic to everything everyone has said here.
Sorry, what was I addressing on?
31 Vestway.
Vest.
I'm empathetic to those who are not in full agreement with the location of the cell tower. But I would add that the transmission lines are in my backyard, and literally, on my property by way of an easement. So not in my backyard either, but more importantly, I just want to provide the input that, to be aware that there's a gas pipeline, natural gas pipeline, immediately adjacent to those transmission lines. There's also a power substation there. So I don't know if you can just go build a cell tower next to those transmission lines, between the transmission lines, without risking that, that gas pipeline and the safety. We're already living with whatever emissions there are from that, from the lines. And then also to add the emissions from the tower, that would all need to be tested. I understand it hasn't been deeply explored. I read the proposal today, but I just want it noted that there's a gas pipeline there to consider, as well as a substation, which is across the street from that intersection talked about in the proposal, between Foster Street and the transmission lines. So I didn't know if I was going to be here at the next planning board meeting, so I just wanted to be sure that was noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kimberly Jones, and I live on 643 South Bradford Street. And a couple things. I wanted to speak out, oppose to this proposal. I don't, I'm not an abutter, and I don't, I probably wouldn't even see the tower. I live sort of about a mile away, but I'm an avid hiker, and I visit Foster Farm and I hike there. And I agree with what's been said. There are very few places in North Andover that have this kind of natural beauty, and it would be, I think, a real shame to put this thing in this really beautiful natural area that we have. I did have a couple of questions. One, I was wondering how this came about. In particular, did the town seek out a location for a tower, or the applicant came to you wanting to put a tower?
In virtually every case, it's the applicant comes to us.
Okay. And if that's the case, is it public information, the extent to which the sort of financial benefit that this applicant will have from leasing this tower? I understand that this is quite lucrative. Is it, is it public information in the documents, or...
The terms of the agreement between the cell company and the abutters, it's private information.
Private, okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't have the access to that.
Because it seems to me that if the tower is going up for the town, that it would benefit the town to be making that money, rather than having the applicant. I understand it's quite a lot of money that is paid to these people.
So this is all, this, we're past age with special permits and uses alone. It's a completely private transaction.
Okay.
At one of the hearings, the Varsity Wireless did say that there would be a lease agreement with the owner of the property, so he would be paid for them to be able to put that, and they would have an easement where they would go and maintain it, so they wouldn't do much. So, but they come to that agreement, whatever those terms are, completely outside, and then come to the town and say we'd like a special permit.
Okay. It just seems like it would benefit the town to have $400,000 a year, if the town was making that money, rather than some private applicant?
I doubt that they were close to that much money, by the way.
That's just what I've been reading on the internet. And the last thing I wanted to say is that I had heard that Foster Farm was, was in part, set aside for a possible school, an elementary school location, and I wondered if that was true. And if that is true, if you all had considered that this tower would be where a future school was going to be located?
That's a long, long ago plan.
So it's not a viable plan?
I can't, I'm not on the school committee now, so I can't speak to what might be happening now, but that was a really long time ago, and who knows, maybe that...
It may have been abandoned. You don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mark Johnson, 440 Foster Street. This was actually brought to my attention today, so I didn't have a lot of time to go through the document, but I do have a question. As far as the zoning board goes, do we have any input to the zoning board on this, since it is defined as residential around in the agricultural land?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the zoning board process is exactly similar to this, it just is based on zoning law, you know?
Understood. So would they have a public hearing as well?
Yes.
They, they opened this past Tuesday, so their noticing requirements are the same as ours, 300 feet from the property lines.
Understood.
So again, that film will be, if it's not posted yet, it should be, but if not, within a day or so.
And there will be a public hearing, and that will be posted on the website, so everybody here can then participate, correct?
For the zoning board, yes. But just so you understand, they did open this past Tuesday, so there has been one hearing with them.
Okay. Do you expect another?
Yes.
There is one, there is a site visit planned for October 22nd, so they're going to go out. You're not, that's not going to be public comments at that, that they just go out, look at it, see where this is. I don't know if they're going to do a balloon thing or not, but they're just going to go out, they're going to go out and see it. After that, there will be another public hearing. I don't know the date, but there will be. And I, again, I know we talk a lot about online, you can get on an email list to get notifications of all these hearings, and just scroll through, you know, Board of Selectmen, ZVA, Planning Board, and you can always just, if you get on that email list, they'll come, and you'll, you might start getting them more than you want, but it says, these are all the things on, and if something catches your eye, hey, that says Foster Street. Now I should pay attention.
I think we even have a community website where we share this information, so...
That's great, that's great.
You said the city doesn't benefit. Is that entirely true? Is there a tax base on this, that the city will pull in on this?
Well, the town will get real estate taxes on it, if it's on private property, whatever the, I mean, if it were built, it would be whatever the perceived incremental value was that they assess it at, you know?
All right. So the city does have some vested interest, potentially.
But no more than any other structure, building, or anything?
Understood. But this is residential property now being basically turned into commercial property, correct? If the zoning board allows that, which frankly...
It does allow it, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, when I bought here in 2004, I sought out the property I live in. And the reason for that is the same reason this nice lady just explained to you. I'm an environmental consultant. I also know what the health... I also know what the health effects are and I am 100% against this. And I will fight whatever it takes for this not to happen. Have they proven to you that they need this location for cell coverage?
We're still in, we're still in the hearing, so nothing's been proven of anything, that's all.
Because there's another one proposed in Bauxford. Very, very familiar with the process.
Right. That's why I think it's beneficial to have the applicant here and they could actually go through that and you could actually see the maps and exactly what they would say.
Okay. Good enough. I mean, the technical information is required to show that they need that site for public coverage.
That's correct.
So they have provided technical information, which we've looked at, but I think it's, we're still in the information gathering stage and that's why this is all helpful.
So in my mind, my recommendation is that the public then go to the zoning board meetings and provide that input.
So we also, just to one of your questions, during one of the past meetings, we asked them to compare different types of antenna designs.
Understood.
So that we could have a better assessment of whether or not there were alternatives.
And you're aware that cell towers normally reduce your property values by anywhere from eight to 10%, correct? And that would then reflect in a reduced tax base for everybody who lives around us who currently pays taxes, me myself, over eight grand a year. 10% is a lot in North Andover. I appreciate it.
Megan O'Morgan, I just want to comment based on one of his comments. He said that they need to show that they need this space for coverage. I want to point out that even the consultant that they hired ended his paragraph with, "There may be other alternatives." So clearly, there might be other alternatives. They don't, they haven't proven that they need just this site. I just want to raise on your comment.
Good evening. My name is Pam Rivet. I live at 67 Foster Street. I guess I'm not a great judge of what 300 feet looks like, but I'm very surprised that I did not get notified of this. So it's like, I can practically see if there's no leaves on the trees, I can see the young's house. And I'm very, very upset. I got home tonight at 6 o'clock to see, thank you. Thank you very much. In my mailbox and I had to be here, even though it's up until 1:00 in the morning at ER with my daughter. But I'm just very upset because of the process and not being notified of it. And just as, just for information, I used to work at American Tower and I know for a fact what the rates are that Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and what have you get for rent on the towers. And I would gather that it would probably be at least $2,000 a month per, you know, each customer, each vendor. So it is quite lucrative. It's obviously the reason why he's doing this. There's no other reason why you would want to put a huge tower on your farm in this beautiful area. So I am also, my biggest concern is my property value. I can show you a picture out my front window and I would be looking straight on that tower. I have a beautiful view of the backside of your hill and that's going to be right there. And that's basically part of my retirement. Thank you.
Hi, I just want to conclude with, I noticed on the list of founding fathers that the Foster name is prominently displayed. And I would like, again, as the keepers of land use in this community, for you to really think long and hard about the legacy that the Fosters have given this town. It is our story. We are a great inland town and we were an agricultural community. And this is a really sacred place. And I think whether cell tower service improves on Foster Street, you know what? I do not care. It is not important. Because in the scheme of things, we have the responsibility as citizens of this community to really care about the last places that we have that are this special. And I really think it's important that this board kind of look beyond maybe even the regulatory requirements. I know we're going to zonings, the zoning variances are unbelievable. Eight of them with, and we're not talking 15 or 20 yards of setback, 600 yards of setback. I mean, enormous concessions under our existing zoning and a commercial use in a, not even a residential district, yes, an agricultural protected area. Different and deserving, I think, of really careful consideration. Thank you.
I just wanted to, since I'm the one that put the flyers in everyone's mailbox today, I just wanted to find out what the next step we need to know about, what meeting do we need to attend next? Because clearly, we as a group agree that this is not the right place for this or something like that.
Well, we will meet in two weeks and this will be on the agenda, so we certainly hope you would come and ask a lot of the specific pointed questions that you asked with the applicant here. The ZBA meeting, do you know where the next one is?
I do not, but our meeting is three weeks because November has five Tuesdays. I'm sorry, October has five Tuesdays. So November 7th is the next planning board meeting.
Yeah, this is what you mean.
At 7:00 here.
Yeah.
I do not know the ZBA. I think they're typically the second Tuesday of a month.
Okay.
Typically, so you need to look at their website.
So would we need to go to that meeting first? Which-
You don't need to go to any meetings. You can go to as many meetings as you like.
I mean, again, it's a separate process and I think you brought up the point that there's a lot of variances, significant variances. You can go to that meeting and express your view and your opinion that the variances are not appropriate, they don't have anything to do with soil conditions, slope or topography, and it would not be incon- I'm reading the zoning bylaw off the top of my head. I certainly, you know, if you have somebody who's a lawyer and understands land use, that would be, you know, helpful for you. But you definitely should go to that meeting and you should come as many people to this meeting. That's, that's how the process works.
Yeah, I agree with John. The more input we can get, facts are definitely where we, I mean, it's very nice to hear and actually important to hear about the history and things like that, but we are somewhat limited in what we can base a decision on. And bylaw talks about that. So the more we can hear about, you know, those things, about adequate coverage, about other opportunities that they had, things like that, that's what we need to base it on. I will have to say that if the zoning board of appeals did not grant the variances, then we don't have anything to decide. So you may want to take that into consideration.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Justin Owens, 193 Foster Street. It's nice to meet all my Foster Street neighbors. Is there some sort of like home value impact assessment for something like this as part of the planning process?
No, it's just not.
It's just not?
It's, we have a certain scope in the set of things and you can read what they are in the bylaw. I mean, it's, you know, not directly, I mean indirectly, we're balancing the, you know, obviously the public impact of this. That's why I think you tend to said everything that you said about impact on the neighborhood, the geography, the culture, the historical landscape and so forth is broadly relevant. But, you know, just leaving it there. I think you've told a good story, you painted a good picture, and then just come back and, you know, to our next meeting. And unfortunately, some of this will be repetitive, but, you know, again, I urge you, really, you should go to the ZBA. The ZBA is, as you said, we can't do, if they say no, we can't do anything. It's done.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's where you want to go.
And then before, I used to have, say, T-Mobile, right? And you can get a device that can broadcast via your Wi-Fi a cell signal. AT&amp;T and Verizon both offer these devices. And anyone who has those services can pick up that signal if you're near the homes that have those devices. So if they were really concerned about covering the neighborhood, they could provide those devices to their customers.
Power star pay grade, that's absolutely.
Yeah. But I mean, I mean, that's like a fact of, a reason why a big cellphone tower isn't necessarily needed anymore because the voice of IP is just as fast.
Fair enough. Good, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rob Jones. I live at 643 South Bradford Street. And I'll just stay upfront, I'm opposed to this tower for many reasons. I just wanted to clarify a few dates and then I have a few comments that echo things that people have already said. If my review of the website is correct, the next zoning board meeting is November 14th. Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't have that in front of me.
If it's the second Tuesday, then it would be, yeah.
So that is after your next meeting.
That would be after our next meeting, correct.
What is going to happen at your next meeting regarding this issue if you're still waiting for the zoning board to rule on the variance?
Well, I mean, what will happen is if many of you come, you can ask your questions and-
So the applicant will be here on the next meeting unless they ask for a continued?
It would behoove them to be here, I think.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So what the last gentleman just said is very true. We've had AT&amp;T Pico cell in our house for the last seven years and it provides coverage in our house that routes the phone signal through the internet. It's certainly a viable option when you're in your house. I don't think it works very well when you're driving up in your car with the weak cell service, pulling your garage. It doesn't switch over to the Pico cell very well. But when I'm in the house, I get great coverage. It's definitely a viable option. I'm an electrical engineer. I know that 5G service is coming. I don't think it's fully formed yet. My understanding is it requires much smaller antennas. So I'm wondering, they're going to put up this giant tower that looks ridiculous as a tree and in a few years, we're going to all have 5G service and it may be obsolete. So that's another factor to consider.
Yeah, I mean, we actually asked that question the last meeting and you should ask it again because you could tell whether you get a clean answer. But the answer we got, by the way, was that the miniaturization is offset by the voracious demand for capacity.
Right. That's certainly true. I'm just going to close with one other comment. We, I've been living in North Andover now since 2008. We love North Andover, the rural nature of a lot of it. I volunteer with Friends of North Andover Trails. And I can't tell you how wonderful it is to live in a town where there are so many trails that we can take advantage of, including the one at Foster Farm. And it would really be a shame to spoil that view that so many people enjoy when they're out hiking, when they're driving down, looking at this beautiful field. To have this tower there is a travesty, in my opinion. And I guarantee you that most of these people are going to be at the zoning board meeting opposed to this because we, I've heard you that that's the first place we need to fight. But I thank you for letting us speak our piece here because this is not something that should happen in North Andover, in a community, in a residential neighborhood like this.
So thank you all for your patience and for your careful, measured comments. Really very helpful to us as we deliberate. I think you pretty much know the process going forward. I would, I know Jean's busy, but if you have any questions, please, you know, contact her and she can put you in touch with somebody else if it is somebody else for general information. And there are a lot of resources available, as we said on the website and elsewhere. So again, thank you for coming and thanks for the careful listening.
Where'd that have you?
Moving right along. See, we have other business to you then.
You did?
Not as important.
No, not as important. Yeah, I think it's much better that's, that's the Richard Rowan. Uh, Richard Rowan made a mistake one time years ago by cutting off the bay on something like that. He'll never cut off a bay on something like this. Yeah. You gotta listen.
And you know what? It's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meeting is very different. It's not just the applicant. No, it isn't.
It's totally different, you heard that?
Yeah.
I'm really curious.
Yeah. All right, Jean, what do we got here? New public hearing, 1679 Osgood Street.
Yes, so the locus is displayed. 1679 applicant is, "Before you requesting approval of a corridor development District Three special permit in order to allow a contractor's yard with outside storage of landscape material and landscape slash contractor's equipment. The applicant has requested a waiver of stormwater report as there is no activity proposed within 100 feet of a wetland, no impervious area proposed, no buildings proposed, and no changes in grading or topography proposed. He's also requested waivers of building location and building elevation. Again, no buildings are proposed in the traffic impact study. Department reviews have been conducted. The fire department actually sent a very late email this afternoon. So the deputy chief apologizes for the delay, but he visited the Osgood Street site and currently the fire department has access to the property. If the occupant maintains this access through the property for the apparatus, maintains all flammable and combustible storage in compliance with NFPA 30, then the fire department has no issue with the permit for a contractor yard. That being said, I think when they got there today, they didn't see all the equipment in the back and so we would consider, should this proceed to a decision, to maybe require a drive-through with equipment back there. The building commissioner we can speak to during the hearing, he submitted some comments we got in the parking. DPW had no comments. The health department had comments related to, "They will need a passing Title V inspection and the new proposed use must be within the existing system's capacity or they will have to expand their system." I think the applicant is going to speak to that comment today and may submit some more supplemental information. They're not within 100 feet of a wetland and DPW had no concerns giving no additional impervious surface. I've also provided you a copy of the CDB3 bylaw as this is not a typical application before the board. And so there's some different design standards as well as criteria for the outdoor storage screening.
And this is the, sort of the end of that zoning cleanup we did last year.
Yep. So a year ago May, the applicant proposed a zoning bylaw change to allow the use on this property. The planning board supported that article at town meeting. It did pass, so the use was added, again, by special permit only and with conditions to be met regarding the outdoor storage use.
Okay.
So Steve Stupinski is here from MRMAC Engineering to present the site plan. So is everybody comfortable with the locus? It's across from Osgood Landing. It's an odd-shaped lot. Behind it is a residential subdivision, so you don't see the houses yet, but those lots were divided and houses have been constructed behind the site.
Jean?
Chairman, members of the board via record, my name is Steve Stupinski from MRMAC Engineering.
I'll have the existing conditions plan of the site in front of you. The castle is 2.8 acres in size. It is directly across the street from the athletic fields of the old Weston Electric, which is now 1040 Osgood, whatever it is today. And, let me see, 60 years ago, hate to say it, but I went here with my father, who worked at Weston Electric. He used to always buy flowers from Coppola's Florist. This was Coppola's Florist site. So the buildings that you see on the site, there's six of them, five were there originally when Coppola's Florist had the site. They had a farm and grew flowers, they had retail and wholesale operation. And one of the buildings is relatively new. It's an accessory garage that was built by Mr. Lawler about three years ago, roughly. But otherwise, the five buildings are there since the time that Coppola's had the wholesale and retail flower business. So on the site, although there are six buildings, they're kind of a mixed use. You have a residential building up in the rear that has an attached garage. You have residential building up in the front with an attached garage. You've got a couple of buildings that are used as offices to conduct business. And then you've got a garage that was built in a third-
you've got a garage that was built in a third residential building right here in the centroid of the site.
Is that something that could be built under current zoning, right?
Well, it's been there. Like I said, I don't know. I know I was there 60 years ago, and we used to go there every week to see Helen, whatever her name was. I don't know. She worked for Coppola's, and she made bouquets when I finally always gave my mother flowers. Anyway, drive into the site, there's a loop driveway that comes around this, back, in and out. Only a portion of it is paved. There was pavement, you can tell, it's gravel now, but you can tell that it was paved between the garage and the residential building at one time, but that's all broken up, and it's really more like, it's broken pavement now, it's almost like gravel. The garage has no bathrooms in it, but the other buildings have bathrooms. They're serviced with a septic system and town water. The septic system is relatively new. I'm going to say three, four years. Our office designed to repair, and it was installed by a licensed installer in North Andover. So there is adequate septic capacity. It's a relatively new septic system. I know, as Jean mentioned, there's a letter from the Board of Health regarding certification from the installer. I was with Mr. Lawler today, and we spoke with the installer, and by the end of the week, he's going to get the letter that the Board of Health has requested to the board, and of course, to you as well for your files. A large portion of this site, this site used to be part of the subdivision that you have out in the back, the residential development, and the site was sort of lopped off from the subdivision. So this land really sort of came all the way back, I don't know how many acres it was, 30 acres at one time, more or less. To the north of the site is the south storage facility, and to the south of the site is Tyler Monroe's landscaping operation. You've got Peter Breen down the street, several of the landscapers as well that operate along Route 125 in this corridor. Again, pre-existing this use that we're here for now. As far as buildings, there's no buildings that are proposed. There are, there's no storm drainage system proposed, and we're not adding any impervious area. What's there right now, we want to keep in place. We're not proposing really any new parking, except that for the contractor's yard, we have to specify where the construction vehicles would be located. In that regard, the second sheet or the large drawing shows the area where Mr. Lawler would be limited for his construction equipment. There'd be four pieces here, and there would be nine pieces here, and then four right here. So he'd be limited to those areas for storage of equipment. As far as material storage, he would build these block walls, pre-cast concrete block walls. I think you've seen them in the past, and they, Peter Breen has them out in the front. You drive by, see the mulch, different colors mulch, right? The red, the hemlock, all those stuff. So he's going to have three bays for material storage contained within those blocks. That's going to be about six feet high, be limited to that. And then, and that's it. So those are the only improvements that are proposed. In discussion with staff early on, since town meeting adopted the change in the bylaw, staff suggested we look at what was happening here on the hill in terms of visibility down into the site. So we did a topographic survey, and it's about a 12-foot drop from the bottom of the slope to the, you know, from the top of the slope down to the bottom. 12, 14 feet in some places. So there's a big drop. The equipment will be stored sort of below that drop, so that topography is a natural buffer. But we're going to add about 142 foot of six-foot-high evergreens along the line, densely planted. That would provide a buffer for any of the residential uses beyond, because even in the summer, this woods is kind of thin, I guess I would call it. It's thin deciduous mix of trees. Certainly in the winter, there would be no buffer, except, you know, because there's no leaves, obviously. So we put the evergreen buffer in here, and I sort of looked at it out of the site where the residential uses are, and this would be the most effective location, and there wouldn't be any need to carry it any further north. As Jean mentioned, there was a letter from the building inspector. He did ask that we take the area that we've designated as parking. Now, some of these parking spaces are actually used. If you drove out there tomorrow, I mean, you'd see people who live here, they actually park where I have them shown, right? So what he's asked is that we take these eight parking spaces that service the residential uses and put a sign that says, "Reserve for tenant parking," or "tenant parking," or "resident parking," something like that on the sign. So there's eight locations. I kind of draw them in in orange, but he made a little sketch. I know he initialed it.
I've displayed the sketch, if you can read that, but...
That's up on the wall.
So the...
So I kind of marked it in orange based on his sketch.
So the sign markings is an alternative to striping those spots?
Right. Because, you know, they're grass now. We don't want to pave grass. We want to leave it pervious and leave it grass. And so we could put the signs instead of paving and striping, because you can't really spread more grass. And then he indicated, he went up there, he saw that there was a break in the pavement. He'd like that trench, there was an electrical trench that was run, he'd like that repaired because it provides emergency access to this residential use. And then he'd like this area that I've outlined in pink paved as well, because it would allow vehicles really to kind of make a wide turn and go back out. So both of those things are conditions in his letter. They're not issues, and so would Mr. Lawler would do them. So we did review them, and the building inspector did initial that plan that's up on the screen. I think Jean has adequately presented the waivers. I can't add too much to it. I would say the larger-sized plan that I have does show the location of the site lighting that's there right now. There's no additional site lighting proposed. The lights from the house come down onto the driveway. Lights from this house down onto the driveway from this garage run back to the residential use. And from this house as well, they light up kind of the parking here. There's no other lighting, so we don't have to be, that's proposed, so we're not concerned about spill or impacts to the residential users in the east. So what's there for lighting? That was all the lighting that's going to be necessary. So that's about it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Lawler is here. If you have questions for him more specifically.
Is there, is, what type of work, if any, is actually going to be done?
Sorry, what type of what?
Work, noise. I mean, what is actually going to be done on the property?
They have got like pickup trucks for the landscapers. You know, they come in. The employees would park where the trucks are, and they get in the pickup truck and drive to the place that, the house that they're going to cut the lawn at. So they, that's it. Then you've got dump trucks, you know, smaller dump trucks. They're not, you know, big Mack diesels. They're regular 10-wheelers and 6-wheelers that come in and bring material. They bring the gravel or what is, you know, stone or whatever, dump that. And then you've got a front-end loader and backhoe for moving the material and loading the material. So it's that type of operation. It's not a, continue, there's no screening, so they don't continuously bring in loom and screen it. There's no screening operation. There's no recycling operation. It's literally come there in the morning, get the equipment, go to the job, come back at night, drop the equipment off, bring material in for storage, bring it off for sale.
So I think my only kind of concern is if it is kind of abutting that subdivision just noise, you know? People are going to be starting work at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, coming back late, that kind of thing.
Maybe six?
Yeah, we guys start at 7:30.
Yeah, 7:30.
And get back.
It sits below the back...
Right, there's a 12-foot...
The two, it haves a whole landscaper's 20 probably now.
Okay. That's just on the top of the slope, then you've got the slope up to their houses. So it's probably 18, 20 foot at least of the first house, maybe more vertically.
And how many trucks did you say? And when I say trucks, I mean large, large vehicles would be in the yard?
Well, I didn't really differentiate between vehicle type. Pickup trucks under the definition and its use, the same as dump trucks, right? Same as backhoes and front-end loaders. So we have total equipment storage of 17 vehicles. So four in one place, not in another, and four in another.
And just to follow up on the nature of work on the site, is the nature of work such that there'd be more than a few of those with engines running, idling at a given time? And I'm asking just because, you know, we typically have a prevailing wind out of the west, which I think would blow towards that residential area, and I'm just curious about what sort of level of fumes would be blowing. I mean, I don't know what the type of use is. Are they sitting there idling, or is that not how it operates?
I would think that, you know, in the morning, probably, look, I know my guys do. They get to, they get to my office, they're surveyors, and they just start up the truck and let it run for five minutes to get it warm while they're getting their stuff inside. And I always go and shut the thing off and something. I don't think Chad's as cheap as me. So, you know, you've got to figure, they're going to be running the trucks for five minutes or so while the truck warms up in the winter. In the summer, they won't be running it at all. They get in and drive or go off to the site. In terms of dump trucks, there might be some idling that occurs while they're discharging material or they're loading material. Of course, you've got the loaders, but, you know, you're not going to run a loader, you're only going to run a loader as long as you need to run a loader, because you don't want to spend the money or gas. It's just, you wouldn't do it. And the other thing that you have to remember, and this is maybe kind of a safeguard, is that he's got tenants there living in the houses. So before the fumes are going to get to the abutting residential uses, they're going to get to his residential users. So you really can't do anything that's going to impact negatively the people that live on the site. Other thing that's good about it, because you have people living there, you know, the security at night, so you don't have to worry about things. You're not going to be running operations at night because you'd be disturbing the people that live there in your own minutes. So. Any other questions? Jean, what board do we have to do with this?
Do we know, do we know if there's anyone that wanted to speak on that?
Yes, there are some abutting there.
Okay, there you go. Whoa, this is tonight for people. Come right up and...
I didn't know if they were on this or if they were pop people, so...
Pop people. I'll start if there are others of us. My name's Diane Cienus, and I'm in 64 Stanton Way. I'm down the end of the cul-de-sac, and I'm in the butter. I just want to state that as far as the bays go, as far as what they're proposing, there is constant noise all day right now.
Okay, that's...
Okay? That could be those...
So that is the status quo today? Because I was going to ask that question.
Status quo, it's noisy all day. I work most of the time. I am home on Wednesdays. It goes from morning till night. Sometimes the noise is through the night. If they decide they want to do something at 1:00 in the morning, they start doing it 1:00 in the morning. I don't know if any of you have ever had mulch or loom or anything like that delivered, but what they're proposing is with their dump trucks, you hear those dump trucks all the time. They open their dump truck, dump their load, they bang it around a few times. It gets loud, it gets noisy.
Is the noise from this site or is it from the other ones?
It's from all of them.
So it's from the...
I'm so definitely opposed to additional noises.
No, I just, but you hear it not from the abutting sites from the, that were mentioned that were contractor yards as well?
Yeah, we hear from those, yes, from those yards as well. It's not just this one. But what they're proposing and all the equipment that they want to bring in, the pickup trucks, the dump trucks, loading materials, so you're going to have front, and loaders just going at that gravel or that mulch, loading trucks all day. I mean, yes, they might go out first thing in the morning to a home, but they're not going to be gone the whole day if they have another yard that they have to put gravel or mulch on. They're going to be coming back and forth all day, every day. It's going to be backhoes. He said, as far as the idling trucks, that's literally, that's right on my property line. And I don't like hearing that all the time. I happened to be one of the people who called when they were starting to put in a few of those bays in the back of their property for their mulch and whatever else they want to put in, because I was concerned that they were coming too close to the property lines. I know the environmental department went out and they took a look at that, so I don't know how that all came out. But I'm just saying, as, in a butter, I'm totally opposed to having any more noise.
Have you ever had any dialogue with any of the owners of the property about tamping it down and, you know, or is it just something that you've suffered?
No, this is, it's something that we've, yes, suffered with. They were talking about lights and saying that they were going to be pointed towards 125. Yes, there is another one of the contractors. The lights come into our house and they're on, they're security lights, so they're on all the time. That's annoying. I certainly wouldn't want any lights. I know they're saying putting up evergreens as a buffer. I don't know that evergreens, 100, you know, 40 foot of evergreens is really going to help because they're right there on my property line. So, and evergreens not going to stop the noise from coming through.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
That's my feeling. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Hi, Chris Baldwino, 50, Stanton Way, also in a butter. I share the sentiments of my neighbor as well. I was actually under the impression that that land was sort of abandoned, just the way that it looks. So I was not clear at all on what was actually being done, so it's helpful to hear specifics for the first time myself. Share the concern with the noise, that's sort of my main, my main issue. We are already close enough to 125, enough noise coming from that. Sort of the appeal of the development was the conservation land that we cannot touch. It has that feel. We've heard from the arguments about the cell tower as well. That's sort of the appeal of our community. And directly behind us is already one landscaper, which I understand to be Mr. Monroe's. There are, there's noise from that, particularly during winter operations. So one question I do have is whether or not winter operations are part of the use of this land, or is it strictly...
Actually, that's, that's a good question. Maybe we can have the applicant respond to that. Can you respond to...
It is winter as well?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be stove plows?
Yeah, but the way it works is when the town calls, I plow them all down, and I plow for private people, but when the town calls, they start the truck up, and I go plow my route. When the storm's over, I back up and park.
Got it.
If I plow my property, it's the same as any other neighborhood. I would be able to 20 minutes plow it. Same as probably how we do it.
Chad, can you just state your name?
I'm sorry, Chad. I'm on 1679 Osgood Street.
So for the current landscaper that's behind us, you generally wake up and leave at a reasonable hour to go to work, so they have to start their work before that, so that it's plowed, so you can get out, parking lots are cleared. So during the winter, you hear those engines running, warming up on a bitter cold morning well before 6:00 AM, when you're probably getting up to leave your house. So the operations during the winter are particularly noisy. Foliage is off the trees, that carries right through. Evergreens, I appreciate that, probably won't do much. I'm not the closest, but definitely in a butter, given the odd setup of the land. I'm at the extreme end of it there, the way it comes through. So with this diagram further, further south on 125 at the other end. So there's noise that will carry up to us as well. I can appreciate the story of what the land used to be, used for 60 years ago, if it was a flower shop. Today, I wouldn't have any issue with it. Those don't make a lot of noise, as far as I know. But this just seems like it would add to the noise we already hear from the existing landscaper that's there, and it is audible. It's loud trucks, it's not just pickup trucks. There are larger vehicles that I've heard and can see clearly during the winter when all the leaves have fallen off. So it's something I'm definitely opposed to. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
Hi. Joe Rotolo, sixty-five Stanton Way, and I'm directly behind the applicant's lot there. And I echo the comments of my neighbors. Definitely the biggest concern is the noise, but for me, particularly visual, when the applicant dug in to create that slope, a number of trees were removed. So, I know on my land, I have...
You know when that was done?
Well, I've only been there for two and a half years, so shortly after I moved in.
Okay.
So, the slope was created, and I can see right down in there. So, those proposed bays, I think they're already built, because I can see them. So, with more equipment, you know, that's going to be stored there, the slope is probably not as, as, it's not a good log as, as described. You know, the, the evergreens would be great. I, I think there needs to be more, though. Just one line of them is probably not enough. I think it'd be more appropriate to have it on the property line, which is probably a small price to pay for the amount of trees that were removed during the excavation. And then, yeah, the noise, again, same thing. Look, the, the noise is all hours of the night. When the applicant was building the, the sixth structure there, I mean, they were reverse lights for the equipment, two AM, three AM, four AM. So, there's definitely no restrictions on the hours of operation. It's at whatever time. So, that, that's a little frustrating. And then, the lighting, you know, with the industrial lights on the structures, it shines into my house as well. I mean, my bedroom's lit up like a Christmas tree in the winter, so...
One of the things I'd like to do, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but Eten, if, could you explain how site plan review works and what our jurisdiction is? If I could put you on the spot to do that?
So, I mean, I haven't read it recently, so I'm not the best person.
But just the general concept of what, you know, how site plan review works and what we can do and not do is probably...
I mean, we are, I think, I think what John's getting at is that we are somewhat limited. Basically, they have the right under zoning to do most of what they're doing. So, we're trying to figure out the best way for that to happen. The cell towers, yes, no, are you allowed to do it? This is more, what can you do and how? So, they, they talk about the evergreens and things like that, and mitigating problems, that's kind of what we're dealing with, rather than can you or can't you do it? So, I think that, you know, hearing about noise is important, but also hearing about what is actually happening now. So, if it's already noisy, and it's going to continue to be noisy, not so much we can do about that. If it's going to be more noisy or different hours, and how things are set up, and that's kind of, how things are set up is really what we're looking for. I think it is important, though, to kind of hear about this, for the applicant to hear about this. And we certainly encourage people to have ongoing conversations, because this is something that everyone can get comfortable with between yourselves, and that also makes us more comfortable.
Yeah, I'm actually not opposed to it. I just think that there should be a more of a look-before-you-leave approach.
I mean, we can condition it, hours of operation, screening, those sorts of things, as Eten says, but we can't say, no, we don't like to use period.
Of course, yeah. I mean, well, I think he, yeah, I mean...
It's a more of a buffer, is what you're looking for.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, he has, he absolutely has the right to do it. I mean, that's, I'm not arguing that. Like I said, it's more of a look-before-you-leave, rather than just do it. So, yeah, I mean, my biggest concerns is the screening. I'm not sure six foot high and just one row was enough, you know, for lighting and noise. And again, I am the director of butter, so visually, you know, if I don't have to see it, that would be wonderful.
Okay, good, thank you. Gene, I, I think the lighting resonates, and, you know, we have pretty strict standards of downcast lighting that doesn't...
Cannot shine off the property, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will note, the subdivision was permitted, I think, in two thousand thirteen, and lots that are but the CDD zone required a twenty-foot buffer to be not disturbed. So, they're on the residential part, so, so there is a twenty-foot, no cut, no disturb buffer zone on the residence side of the property line. Granted, those leaves probably do fall off, and, and that could be of concern, but that is there.
Yeah, I think that, in that case, the developer actually did a pretty good job of that project, is my recollection.
Yes, Stanton Way, yes.
Yeah.
I think so. So, the outstanding item is the health department and that letter from the subject design consultant. Other than that, I think we have all the department reviews in.
Okay, good. Mr. Spansky?
I'll tell you that greenhouses, by the way, were up where the houses are now. So, where the single-family houses are, that's where they grew the flowers, and just to have roadway that actually went up there from one twenty-five. Now, it's a subdivision. But anyway, I spoke with Mr. Lawler, and he doesn't object to, in the area that gentleman was just talking about, along the property line, putting some additional trees. So, in effect, you'd have almost a double buffer. That should also add or aid with the noise reduction, I would think, like double buffer of trees. Terms of the lighting, I went up there myself, and I don't, I, I didn't see when I was up there several months ago, light going the other way.
Well, I mean, it might be...
Could be. You got, you got Tylers, and you got Muskies.
Yeah, it might not be a bad idea if, like, all three of the guys working there would be with the neighbors a little bit in good faith.
Those guys are kind of grandfathered, so it's pretty hard, but, and the self-storage is kind of bright.
Those guys are very good community citizens.
I, I, I don't disagree.
And I'm sure they would be willing to do that.
I don't, I don't disagree, and...
I saw Peter Struck this morning, so...
Exactly. So, anyway.
So, the hours of operation has come up a few times. Do you have any thoughts on hours of operation?
Normally, it's seven to five per week, but my only thing is I'm off the town, so I get, I wish it was a seven to five, but sometimes we haul off for a week, so we're not, we're not getting a lot, so.
Okay.
But again, because my neighbors...
So, it'd be, yeah, it'd be worth having a conversation with them, I think. I just, I mean, we would ask that you do that, and, you know, just...
Probably seven to seven for this type of operation would be a normal thing that you would expect. And then, in the evenings, only when nature requires, the conditions of the roadway require, you know, the snow plowing.
Okay, good, okay. Yes, please come up. There's Tyler, I can see you there.
My butter knife. Tyler Monroe, sixteen fifty-nine Osgood Street. So, I kind of feel bad for Chad, because if you guys remember, that area was industrial S, where they shoved all of us contractors. Like, that was the only place in town to go, and that's why I used to own sixteen thirty-five, where Muscus landscaping is, and then sixteen fifty-nine, and I actually had an option to buy where Chad is, going to put them all together, but no sewer down there. So, you know, we divvied them up. But I'm probably the biggest offender of the lights and the noise. And, you know, and I have a big light there that lights the whole thing for security, and Muscus has lights everywhere, and, you know, but we're grandfathered, and we do what we do. I mean, you know, and a little history, like, when Stan Circle was, was bought, I mean, the commercial land used to go back a hundred and fifty feet, then they went with that law when they had the commercial and the residential land, and they could take a piece of the commercial land. So, they moved Stan Circle even closer to the commercial. Like, all those lots come in, and they moved them, you know better than me, Steve, you know? But I mean, they moved them fifty feet more toward, you know, the commercial than they were before, you know? And another plan, you guys saw the plan, and I, I don't expect you to remember, but that's what happened, that's why the houses are so close there. You know, they took a piece of the commercial land. And as far as the noise goes, I mean, the trash trucks on one twenty-five are like ninety percent of your noise. I mean, there's a, the big bump in front of our house that, like, rattles the house, you know, every time they go by, it rattles the house. I mean, one twenty-five is a noise. But it's just what goes on in the area down there, and I know I'm not going anywhere, and Brian's not going to go anywhere, and, you know, we don't do anything on purpose, it's just what we do for work. And like I said, at one time, it was like, I got thrown out of the places, because it's like, you've got to find a commercial place, and go down there toward the Hable line, go down toward the Hable line, and that's where we ended up. And that's what goes on, and that's what the zoning was there, and, you know, that's just what goes on there. You know, and, and the new zoning was great, the corridor district zoning was great, and I think Kirk Bollagans did a good job on it, but maybe I kind of dropped the ball, because I was involved with it, and I didn't see that they took away the existing zoning with the IS when they added other stuff, you know, so...
Well, all, all we want is, we want everybody to be good neighbors and help each other out, and you're a good guy, and I know you'll do that.
But I'm probably one of the biggest offenders there, you know, because I've been there...
I'm sure you do what you can.
Yeah.
I'm sure you do what you can.
Yeah, anyway, just a little history of the area, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Pisinis, sixty-four Stanton. What Ballas made as a statement was, is, well, we're grandfathered in, so it's okay. It's not. You said, respect your neighbors, correct? If he knows it's lights and traffic and yada, 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 it's annoying your neighbor. To make a statement is, well, we're grandfathered in, it's not a good neighbor.
Well, I think you guys should go outside and talk. I don't want to, you know, he's a good guy, trust me, he's a good guy.
I'm sure he is, but, you know, consideration goes along with it.
And he's done a lot for the town over the years, and I think if you come together in a respectful way, you'll, you'll be able to make some sort of accommodations.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
I mean, I, I just want to, if, if, I think the comments so far generally have been helpful, but I think they should relate to Mr. Lawler's application.
Hi, I'm Roger Sheldon, I'm fifty-one Stanton Way. I just wanted to echo the same comments that my neighbors have made. You know, noise is definitely a significant issue for us. My property actually is set back around about a hundred and fifty feet or so, and I can still hear the noise from that, from that area. And, you know, the noise is all times of day and night, weekends as well, so Saturday, Sunday, you know, starting very early. So, definitely giving consideration to the time of, in terms of the operating permit that you want to offer, I think is, you know, needs to be strong consideration of that, particularly at the weekend. That's the time when we are all at home during that, during that time.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, thank you. We'll, I think we pretty much know everything we need to know, so we will finish this up at our next meeting.
So, continue to November seventh, November seventh.
Interesting meeting tonight.
I thought we were going to be home, and I gave a call.
Me, too.
We never get so much public interest, you know, with what we do here, it's, uh...
Can I get that, is that the...
Okay, um, we are going to have our continued discussion on sixteen hundred Osgood Street and the framework for the recreational and commercial marijuana zoning bylaw. Gene, did you...
So, for sixteen hundred Osgood, they did not submit any new material, they just requested to be carried on the agenda in the event any board members have any follow-up questions for them.
Okay.
So, that's why they're there, there was no material in the packet. So, I'll defer to you, if you have any questions for the applicant.
Don't, I don't think we do. So, we can move on to the second item.
Okay, so the second item is the framework of a bylaw for martial or recreational marijuana?
I, one of the things, just as we begin, is, I think everybody here knows, but I, we do want to say for the public record that there was, as the town manager said, a robust discussion last night on the topic at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. And Chris, I don't know if, before we start, if you want to just sort of briefly kind of provide your perspective, when I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, you know, I, I hear it was a very lively discussion. I'll do it anyway, you're here, so we figure we'll, we'll get you, give you a chance to speak, so, yeah.
I guess I would say, we just appreciate the opportunity to have an open discussion and clarity on what the decision is based on, what the criteria are, and truly what the impacts of that decision is. And I think it's important from, from the Board of Selectmen's standpoint, that we work in concert with the planning board, so that your efforts are consistent with what the vision is that we see as selecting. And so, although we're both kind of pulling oars, we're kind of in a different, different rhythm here a little bit, right? So, our discussion, I think, last night identified one area, I think, of pretty universal agreement. And then, the other categories are one that we're looking for more understanding. And I think what's important for us is that we want to make sure that we're making this decision not just upon the, the mass invasion works. Well, that could be an outcome of what the decision is, that's not what our process is in and of itself. It's providing the framework, so you can decide as a town, this is how we want to administer it and where. And so, hopefully, that gave you some insight. We hope at our next meeting to kind of draw to more definitive basis. But we got very good input from Town Council Egan. Thank you very much for keeping us focused on what was relevant and what was pertinent to the discussion, that is, what is the state law and the state guide. And I think that was very helpful to keep us from wandering off the edge of the, of the platform, because there are a lot of things that kind of get thrown in, and being very clear what the difference is between manufacturing, retail, recreational, commercial, medical, making sure we're all clear on that, I think that's really important, so that we don't get sidetracked by red hearings, if that helps. Thank you.
So, Suzanne, do you want to, I mean, is it probably, I'm just trying to figure out, we could say, I know Eten had some comments on our draft, but how would you, how would you want to go through this tonight?
Excuse me. I think, unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I apologize for that. But I believe, are we still going through the, the questions? The first issue is what, right? What type of marijuana establishment will be allowed under the zoning bylaw? And I think that you heard last night that there was a discussion with this Board of Selectmen who indicated that the retail aspect or the retail use of marijuana would, excuse me, there was no vote, I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn, because there was no vote taken by the Board of Selectmen, but there was an indication that the retail use would not be, or put up before the town meeting to be prohibited as a general bylaw. So, that's to, to help the planning board sort of grapple with your own uses of what type would be allowed under the bylaw. So, one of the things we could do is, the framework that was presented lists the different types that would be allowed, and then we could consider which ones you would feel comfortable with having as an allowed use and which not. And so, we'll take it in a very, you know, sort of methodical process, so that we can reach some conclusions and, and make some steps toward it.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I know that the Board of Selectmen has the ability to say, as does the planning board, say yea or nay to any of the five types, it's five types, right? But it still has to be approved by the town meeting. So, say if we, if the, you know, the Board of Selectmen was, probably they will vote to not allow, to put forward to not allow retail. But that goes in a bylaw, and it goes before town meeting. And can town meeting say, reject that and say, oh, we want retail? And the reason I ask that, because I was under the impression that if the planning board disapproved of it, then it could not go forward.
So, there's, there's two concepts here, right? So, there's the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw, and the planning board's sort of task is to draft a proposed zoning bylaw.
Right.
And within that context, there's public hearings, that the public gets the input, and then that's recommended, and that could be placed on a town warrant article. And then, at the town meeting, that would be up for a vote by the town meeting. And then, also, a general bylaw is something that the selectmen would consider, and they would consider whether or not that would be proposed and supported and put on the town warrant, to be decided by the town meeting also. All right, the aspect where the town, the planning board is sort of the gatekeeper, is whether or not the, a marijuana bylaw that would be proposed, that this town meeting would be substantially different or...
case, with the caveat that it would decline, we still have something in place?
Well, the question I have is a slight twist on that because let's, let's say we decided to eliminate the retail use completely because the consensus of
Right.
the boards was that it should be excluded. I, and we, and that's what goes to town meeting. I don't believe anybody could get up on the floor of the town meeting and add that back in because it's outside the scope of the warrant, it was not properly advertised.
Okay, so it would be bundled in, so it would like a yea or nay for all five?
No, it would be, we're proposing a bylaw that has what we propose. In other words, if it's our article, it goes in, when the warrant is published with just the four uses, not the fifth one. I don't believe that somebody could legitimately propose an amendment on the floor to add that back in because it would not be properly advertised. It would be out of the scope of the warrant.
That's what I'm asking.
But so to Chris's point, I mean, John, that's a great point that there is a possibility. I have no idea how the town would vote, given that the Board of Selectmen really went through the vote, you know, 54% voted against the legislation back in 2016, but almost 60% voted for the proposed zoning amendment. So I have no idea where the town's going to come down on retail. If it went to a general bylaw and said retail is banned in North Andover and that failed, then it's an allowed use. If our bylaw allows for it.
Yes.
So would we be better off if we agree, leaving it as an allowed use? And then if the, if the bylaw says it's not allowed, then it's just going to be out anywhere.
Or we could just exclude it from the allowed permits. I mean, we would have the option to do that.
Correct, I guess, but I guess my point is if, if the, if the town meeting wants retail to be an allowed use.
You're right, this is a win ahead of your bets.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I'm saying to just like, if, even if like the courts change things because there could be, the laws are changing all the time and maybe it will come down that, you know, it was, it wasn't the right thing to do, it could be challenged, that the Board of Selectmen, that our town, just because we voted no, is allowed to restrict as opposed to having a general voting referendum, you know, anyway. To actually have, to zone for it with the caveat then that we are not interested in allowing retail. But if it comes down to the fact that we are forced to allow retail, at least we know where it is. We don't have to create a new bylaw, like what Eaton is, a real comprehensive.
You're right, there's, there's two or three ways to handle it. I mean, what you could do is, for example, you could restrict the area where the retail use is allowed. You could restrict it to solely to the one property under discussion. And then if that applicant voluntarily covenants, they don't want to do it, then what you've done is you've
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that's my point. Just so that, you know, in another two years, you don't have to suddenly go, oh, wow, we need to find this spot again because the laws now says we cannot ban it. That's all that I'm talking about.
I have a question, and it's not, it's similar to what Chris is saying, but it's a little bit different. It's not about what happens if the law changes two years down the road or if there's some lawsuit. I guess my concern is the more immediate, let's say the Board of Selectmen recommends a bylaw that prohibits retail use, but that doesn't pass at town meeting. Now, if we somehow plan the zoning bylaw that doesn't include anything about retail, what sort of position are we in with regards to retail? Are we, do we then have a very short runway where we need to deal with the zoning bylaw for retail because of the moratorium expiring? Or what sort of happens in that weird world if we don't deal with it? Like, doesn't that go everywhere? Are we better off to have that backup or like sort of hedge our bets?
So I think, I think sort of in terms of drafting a bylaw, if it's a determination that that will not be, that it isn't appropriate to have it as an allowed use, then you would just put that in your bylaw. And you would say, retail marijuana is not allowed use in the town of North, in any zoning district in the town of North Andover. Now, if the bylaw, the general bylaw is passed and it says that it is allowed, that's different, right? That's sort of your legislative authority that's being exercised to prohibit a town wide or not. It's almost like if you think about dry towns that don't permit alcohol being sold, right? So if you have a zone, that's general, no licensed entities will, can exist in this town, can operate in this town. And then you have zoning, which is your land use, and where can it be sited? So if you have something that says that there can be no retail operation sited in this town, then that's under zoning. Even though it's not a dry town, well, I'll call it a dry town just for ease, even though it's not a dry town, so what you would then have to do is then nobody, I would say that nobody could go in and apply for a special permit. There would be no mechanism to do that. You would eventually then, you know, want to deal with that as a land use issue, but you would have dealt with it at that moment. You would eventually consider, well, okay, this has been permitted by the town and, you know, we have to consider it. But in order to be sort of clear as to what you're doing in the zoning issue for this, I would suggest being clear in the, I would suggest being very clear in your zoning bylaw.
So you mean dealing with it specifically one way or the other, not just omitting it?
Exactly. You want to call it out, you want to describe it, you want to put it, you want to put your purpose in this zoning bylaw, you want to say, we have considered X, Y, and Z and we have determined, you know, make a decision. Because the worst thing I find for boards and applicants is when it's unclear and when there's confusion and then that, that ends up making your roles really difficult and it also costs time and money.
Actually, to my point, that's what, because that's what seems like, what Eaton's been really trying to talk about in the very, very broad bylaw that will cover us for quite some time and all areas of town. Make it very clear, just here, not here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Not just specific to the industry.
Can I just follow up on Jen's question, the runway piece? So let's say that the, and I understand your distinction between general bylaw and the land use. So let's say that the planning board developed the bylaw that said, no retail, but subsequent or the warrant from the Board of Selectmen, which let's say it said, no retail, did not pass. So to Jen's runway question, at that point in time, is the planning board under some sort of extraordinary time pressure to reconcile or, or not?
No, Pete, well, if you think about this, there is a number, when you look at a zoning bylaw, there's a table of allowed uses. And in most bylaws, it states any use that's not determined or defined in this table of uses and not a lot in the town. And so if you have your zoning bylaw and in a portion of it you say, marijuana, retail marijuana is prohibited in this town in your zoning bylaw, it, that's, I have, that I would say is within your legislative authority to do this. Different than medical marijuana where the Attorney General's Office determined that a town could not prohibit medical marijuana through its zoning bylaws. So that, you had to allow it somewhere in your town, but this is different. This is
Yeah, what you're clearly saying is it's better to exclude it, to say, retail's not allowed than just to be silent or than not have a retail permit.
Right.
So that, I think that was my primary question tonight is, is, we've talked a lot about the zoning bylaw, but what is, what does the do-nothing approach do? Does that essentially allow uses or restrict uses?
So we have our, so we have the moratorium in place. And once, so we, so once, if the, once the moratorium expires, if you don't have anything in place that prohibits or regulates, then you would look as to whether or not that use would fall into one of the general categories. And so you would say retail operations and, you know, that's obviously allowed in the town. And if you don't call out specifically the marijuana retail, then it would fall within retail. And so it would be allowed.
So I go back, and I, I very much agree with, with Town Council on that, that we need to address it and we need to be clear. What I go back to is that I, again, our role is really about land use and in listening and I watched on DVR the whole Board of Selectmen meeting, I didn't hear any problems with marijuana retail as land use. I mean, it's a store, right? It's a store, that's what it is. I heard problems with having marijuana sold as, in terms of community impact and, you know, in different ways, traffic, in different ways, the desirability of people coming from out of state and all those things, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with, but I understand. And so to me, a general bylaw, town, do you want to have retail sales? Is that appropriate for North Andover? Yes or no, makes sense. From a zoning perspective, frankly, to me, it's, it's a liquor store. And so I would just say zone for it in the places we think liquor stores are appropriate. If the town votes that retail is, is not to be allowed, then that solves the question. But my concern would be is if we don't, if we say it's not an allowed use and then the town either allows it or goes against a warrant article, if that is, then we're saying that what we believe is more important frankly than what the town believes, and I don't think that. So I think that, that we have a potential really good comprehensive bylaw for where marijuana establishments would be appropriate from a land use perspective. And I think from the Board of Selectmen's meeting that, that there was a large amount of consensus that, at least four out of five consensus, that manufacturing and cultivation and independent laboratory ideas were pretty, they're pretty open to those. I think our bylaw is looking really good. I don't worry about being kind of a first people to do it because we've put so much time into it already. So that would be my perspective, is to zone for everything, say where they're appropriate. And then if any limitations or prohibitions come down, then that'll take care of it. But I, especially to your point, John, I wouldn't want to leave it where we can't amend something and then have conflicting moratoriums. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I like that.
How you said it.
Okay. It might be, I want to come back to it, but this might be a good segue to your comments in terms of, you know, basically we said it's the uses allowed, it's the overlay, and it's the regulatory regime in terms of dimensions. So if you can just kind of take us through your comments.
Sure, and so I submitted and it's available in the packet and online, just kind of comments of bylaw, the way I kind of picture this.
Is there any way we can get that put up on the, do?
Through Google, the comments don't come through.
Oh, they don't?
No. Yeah.
So you want to
Well, maybe if we can at least get the strab bylaw up there, then we can talk about where they
No, the one on the agenda, the updated one on the agenda, it shows on the comments. It does, yeah.
I did it as a
Thank you. So, and, so the first thing we have is establishment of an overlay district, which I think is a really good idea. And I agree with Selectmen nobly that this, that we haven't been considering just the Osgood project. And I know I personally have kind of pushed back to the proponents that we're dealing with more than just their project. Their project is a big part of this whole conversation, but the way we've drafted this, one, because we do need to bring something back if it's going to go forward that is substantially different and something that addresses the entire town, not just the Osgood property. And I think this bylaw does that. So having an overlay district, and it does at least mostly focus on the Osgood property, allowing for the uses that are allowed there, but also allowing for medical marijuana treatment center, cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer, the independent testing laboratory. So the independent testing laboratory, so everyone knows, is not, you know, this kind of research and development. It's actually the state licensed checking, checkpoint for recreational marijuana. So recreational marijuana through the state is going to have to be tracked, basically they call it, you know, seed to sale, I can tell that's a misnomer, but, but basically from the beginning to the end, it's going to have to be tracked. And part of that is going to be testing to make sure it's, you know, uptick grade, that it's the appropriate levels of THC and whatever else is in there. That's what the independent testing laboratory is. So that's really kind of a really small niche that's going to potentially develop with all of the recreational marijuana. What Suzanne has kind of put in, which I think is a great idea, is this marijuana research and development, that's not a state license, but these kind of tangential businesses that Dan and his group have been talking about that may require some license, may not, we just don't know, but I think it's a really good idea for zoning. And so I think those are all appropriate in the overlay district. Retail, since the proponents haven't sought it, haven't put it in, in there, and frankly, it could be something that we put in there, but haven't put it in there because that hasn't been something that's been sought. So I think that's, those are the uses that I think we put in for the marijuana overlay district.
I think in terms of the uses, I would lean towards keeping the retail out of the overlay district, just because what I heard at town meeting was a big concern that if there is a large marijuana facility, then all of a sudden we're going to have like the Mall of America of pot in our town. And that seemed to be one of the bigger backlashes that I was hearing. And so I think if we separate the retail aspect from sort of the cultivation, the research and development and the other innovation things that have been brought before us or the other opportunities to go into a large facility like that, I think that takes away at least, or sort of alleviates that sort of concern in a much more concrete way than just one potential applicant telling us, we're not going to seek this. I think we just leave it out and keep it separate, especially after what we've heard from the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, I actually look at it differently. And I would be more concerned from a public policy point of view. And Eaton, I think I may disagree with you a little bit about the use and the impact of the use, but, you know, we can come back to that. But what I like is the use restricted, all the uses restricted to a very specific area because I think if you don't restrict the retail use to an area, you have the, you have the potential where it could be in any commercial district at all hypothetically, unless you put other standards in it. And if you remember the time where we went and we said, let's find all the places that fit these criteria requirements, then the only places that actually fit were the two areas where we have an overlay with very few exceptions. So I would rather narrow it in, the locations where we could put it because I, I do, the reason why I do is I actually talked to a number of developers and so forth that I said, what would be the adverse impact on the community and property values of any of these uses? And they said, the only one they worry about is retail use. And if you, you potentially could put retail in a lot of different places, I think you'll, you'll end up with a bigger problem than if you concentrated in a given area. So that's sort of my perspective on that.
So I actually kind of agree with both of you, I guess, but I don't, I don't know that it needs to be in, so the MOD, we're basically talking about Osgood and maybe some of others that they could talk about. So that's one thing. I mean, I wouldn't also have a problem looking at the map again that we had, if there are places that we could do retail, limiting it to certain places. I actually think, I actually agree with that. Actually, I think it's better to limit it to certain places rather than just say all commercial, all of that. It just may not be this location.
Yeah.
So if we separate, I kind of agree with Jen, separating those two. If this is an appropriate location, or if it's not, if this is not an appropriate location, to see if there are appropriate locations, you know? And just because it might be an appropriate location, if there's a, you know, a place on, you know, 114 or 125 somewhere else, that it might be appropriate. Doesn't mean that the people who own that are going to do it or allow it, you know? So say you said it was, you know, I don't know, somewhere where there's currently a liquor store, you know, or maybe they wanted to change to a pot, you know, retail shop. I don't know that the owner of the, you know, would go for it, but it might be a place that it would be an okay location. You know, if it's not your school, it's not your partner, but I'm not sure. But, so I agree with limiting it to locations. I think it's just trying to find if and what goes on.
We don't limit alcohol, though.
We don't.
We don't limit convenience stores or other stores that sell tobacco. We don't limit pharmacies.
We just offered up a liquor license to a store that would
I don't know that the owner of the, you know, would go for it, but it might be a place that it would be an okay location, you know, that's not your school, is not your apartment, I'm not sure. But, so I agree with limiting it to locations. I think it's just trying to find if and what goes on.
We don't limit alcohol though.
We don't?
We don't limit convenience stores or other stores that sell tobacco. We don't limit pharmacies.
We just offered up a liquor license to a store, which is stone's throw from the Thompson School on Waverly. Brandy new liquor license, without a blink, without a wink.
It's really close to my house.
I know, very convenient, that you can get.
No, I've seen that as a positive.
I know, coffee for 99 cents when you drop off your kids from school, add your bottle of wine, you're good for the night.
And isn't, there's a mechanism, from reading over the slides that Gene had sent from that session a few weeks ago, there is, isn't there a mechanism to restrict licenses that are offered in the town to a certain percentage of package stores? So there's, there's that mechanism as well, while it would restrict it to, the land use to specific areas, but it would generally restrict how many operations could be in town, if it didn't give it to.
Right, so you could limit to 20% of the off premise liquor license? So I believe, if I remember correctly, there is 14 of those and I think we came up with two would be the 20% number.
So to go through a lot of hand wringing over where the areas should be, it sounds like it's already pretty restricted. If, if, if that provision came to fruition.
That would be, right, that would be a general bylaw that would be passed. But the one thing to keep in mind is that provision that's in the state law and also pertains to the medical marijuana is that setback, the 500 foot setback, which was determinative in that map that we looked at as to where this could be. The other thing you could do potentially that I've seen in Framingham does this, is that they do have the one overlay district, but that is broken up into various uses within that overlay district. So if you want to have retail, allow that in one area, but not in, so you have the hope, excuse me, the whole road parcel, which is in the medical marijuana, you could also just exclude that for retail. I mean, that's something, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying that it's.
So we wouldn't have the Mall of America.
Yeah. I mean, I do actually think to Jen's point, there is a, I do have a real kind of bad feeling about if you're cultivating and you're doing all this and there's a store there, that seems like, just like a bad idea. And they said they don't want to do that, so, but, I mean, I think, you know, somewhere on halt, somewhere, I think there are places where, from a land use.
I mean, I think there's, yeah, let's, I think on this one, there's probably three or four permutations or alternatives, making their down and also we have to overlay it with the consideration of what the Selectmen are thinking and so forth.
And the public.
Even if we may, in the public, yeah. And end up with a flexible solution so that, you know, I think a lot of it is, Chris, you brought up this point, that you want to have a framework that whatever we end up with works regardless of what direction the town goes. So why don't we, with that in mind, move on?
So I would like to ask a couple of questions about.
Yeah, okay, a couple more, but I bet only we've solved, we're not going to solve it, now we go ahead.
So we're going to discuss this at future meetings.
Well, why don't you bring it up now, just to get it on the table.
So first, just, this is probably a silly question, but I just want to be sure that I'm clear. We use the term retail. When we use this term retail, we're referring to recreational retail, right?
Yes.
Not medical.
Right, right. The medical marijuana licensing is still a vertical license?
Right.
And that is still, and right now, that's allowed in.
Right. So here's what I'm struggling with. I think we've spent a lot of time looking at cultivation, processing, and more recently we've started thinking about retail. But I'm not sure what the criteria are for retail. And so one of the things I did was, you know, just look at the preface to the bylaws and, you know, what does it say about what these bylaws are supposed to be doing? And I suspect this is going to be a very different sort of take on this, but it does concern me. As a country, we're in the middle of an addiction crisis. And when we talk about recreational retail, to me, that raises a question. And I don't know the answer to that. I may have opinions and I think a lot of people have opinions and I think some of them are very strong. But I'm hard pressed to come down with a decision on recreational retail without trying to inform the question with at least as much due diligence as I think we're trying to bring to cultivation and processing. And it makes me uncomfortable to try to proceed on that based on how I feel. So to me, one possible element of recreational retail is public health. And it might not be an element, but I'm not qualified to say. So I would be interested in having the Department of Public Health come before the board and give us their view. From a recreational usage perspective, especially informed by, you know, where we are as a country with an addiction crisis, are there public health issues that ought to be considered? And the answer may be no, but I'm not the right person to say that and I would like some expert view on that.
It's actually, you want the Board of Health to.
Correct.
The Northand Board of Health.
Right.
Fine, yeah.
Well, to comment, and who knows, they may comment, they say, hey, you know, we do septic systems, we can't help you. But I don't know what their answer is.
Yeah. I mean, Gene, have they expressed any opinion for the record of what they think?
Not that I'm aware of.
About the public health impacts? Do you think that they would be willing to come to one of our meetings to talk about it?
I'll talk to the Director of the Health Department. Maybe they've held a meeting, I'm just not aware of it. So let me talk to him and see if either they can come or they can provide correspondence.
I think it's a great point. I mean, I was actually, there was an article I saw on one newspaper, it said, talked about the link between opioid and legalizing marijuana and actually arguing in Congress to what, I know you haven't stated a position, but saying that legalized marijuana actually helps against opioid addiction. Because it's, you know, if you're in pain, it's something that you can turn to instead. I think there's certainly also a countervailing argument that the more drugs and things that you introduce into a community, you know, the more addiction you're going to have, you know? And that could go for cigarettes and alcohol and things like that too. So I think it's a good conversation to have, I just don't know how much we're going to be able to get out of it because I don't think there are easy answers from lots of lots of smart people.
So I think lots and lots of smart people may disagree.
Right.
And be able to justify their arguments. But we've talked before, given the scope and scale of what we're deliberating on, that public engagement and openness is key. And we just saw it with a cell antenna.
Right.
This is bigger. And so even if after we do it, it's not fully determinative, it's, it would be important to me to say, because we got questions during the cell antenna of us, residents asking, did you as a board ask? Did you as a board seek? And I'd like to be able to answer that question here. We did seek and maybe the answer is it was not determinative, but we sought it out. So, and I think, I'm sorry, Jen's, I love Jen's point about the Mall of America, because I think it's, it's a useful perspective. But for me, it's not necessarily contiguous with a large cultivation facility. It's the Mall of America idea as within the jurisdiction of a town particularly. If it turns out that all of the surrounding towns have said no, then we're an island or a beacon. And I know we've talked about it before and I, I know there's other arguments, but it just says to me, I would like to seek expertise where we have it before we draw decisions.
The only thing I was going to bring up with that is that it seems like that wouldn't be appropriate presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if it falls in with land use as much as it does with, maybe even a joint meaning, but I mean, it just seems more in their purview than in this board's purview?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree that it's not in the Board of Selections' purview, but when I read the preface to the zoning bylaws, one of the reasons for the zoning bylaws is public health.
Yeah.
And to me, that answers the question for, for me, for this board, that we have an interest in that.
I think it's a worthwhile conversation. I was hoping actually to add, Dan Hook, in terms of public access, my understanding is most of what you're proposing is not going to be accessible to the public. I don't know if you could just kind of speak on that, just, just because we're talking about, you know, if not you or someone else put retail on that, or someone put retail on that site, but just kind of what, in terms of what you're proposing, what is accessible to the public?
Sure. Dan Leary with the Massachusetts Innovation Works. To access the building that we toured, which is the licensed area, you'll need to get through a bio-metric scanner with security guards. It's going to be accessed only by workers that have had background checks and people that are supposed to be there. And then within that, there's only people, certain areas where they can go. There is no public access to anything near the space, if that answers the question.
It does, it does, that's, it does.
Could I add something?
Sure, go ahead.
By the way, first I want to apologize for missing your meeting.
You were missed.
I know, I heard Mr. Boynton that you said where I was and I want to tell you that my son has set up a recreation, ah, not a recreation, a fundraising event for one of his charitable foundations and they asked me to stand in for him. So I went. But the point, the other point I want to make on the public health issue, which I think is a very key one here, is that one of the main objectives, that we, maybe we need to iterate it more strongly, is that the primary purpose of the, of the Innovation Works is medical research and really sponsoring, you know, an environment to really look at the applications of cannabis in all kinds of applications. And I think we showed you a little, some of the avenues that are being pursued. We learned the other day that there are 60 clinical trials now going on in other parts of the world on applications of this in cancer, autoimmune disease, which is close to my heart, and a lot of others. So when you talk about public health, there's that dimension to this as well, okay? It isn't just the recreational concerns and I think those are valid and we need to answer those, clearly. But that's the other part too.
I appreciate that. I have yet to hear anybody who comes out against medical marijuana, medical uses of marijuana. I count myself among, you know, where it has application, we should embrace and continue to research that. But I, I find myself sort of having a continued concern in sort of how we frame this.
True.
I think the words you just used were that the majority or primary or largest proportion of the research element would be medical marijuana. That sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
But the research part is only part of this proposal.
True.
And part of it is a million square feet of cannabis cultivation, which we spent a lot of time looking at. Are you also saying that the bulk of the cannabis cultivation is intended for medical and is that what the market bears? Or is there a substantial portion of that for the recreational market? And so when we say the bulk of the research, yeah, that sounds good. There's another part of that argument there, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm just trying to balance how we.
Yeah, and there is a relationship there because clearly the, to fund the research, the funding is primarily going to come from the wholesaling of recreational marijuana. That's true.
Right, and so.
In the beginning, that's going to be very, very true. In the future, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
In the future, I'm not sure.
Perhaps, but let's just have that on the table, right?
No, that's a valid point.
Yeah.
Valid point.
Yeah.
I just don't want to forget it though.
Not forgotten. Thank you.
So going back to the comments, my comments, kind of two, three, four, five, were really all about the uses, which we've kind of talked about. So kind of move towards page four, comment six, this is on 8.1417. I would add the word existing, so allowed marijuana use may not be located within 500 feet in existing, the following existing locations. I think that just makes logical sense.
What about the case where, I think I understand the logic and when I read that, I thought, okay, I see why that's there. So what happens when there is no existing childcare, licensed childcare facility within 500 feet? But a facility wants to be licensed. Is that then the burden of the childcare applicant saying, well, you can't because you're within 500 feet?
I think I can answer that question for you. So when, when a use is coming in for a permit, is you look at its particular use and say, is this allowed? You don't look at the use in terms of what it's located next, you look at that use as to where it is allowed to be located, right? So if a childcare facility comes in and it goes into the, this district and it's an allowed use, you wouldn't say then you cannot be located near this, because that's not what this says, right? We don't have childcare uses, you say they're, we could say under there, they may, they're not, they're prohibited from being located within 500 feet of a medical, of a marijuana facility. So you always look at it as who is the applicant?
Right.
And what regulations pertain to them.
Good, thanks.
And then to your next, I would add licensed childcare facility, I think that's generally what's used and it would just, just kind of clean up the definitions. My comment eight, I believe that the Osgood folks had made a recommendation about changing it, the 500 foot, really, my main concern was I think that would allow potentially the use of those fields still to remain a soccer field, which I think is a great asset for the town. Given that everything they're doing is basically inside buildings, inside buildings, with rooms inside, I'm really not worried. And then what we've already heard about, you know, public access, I'm not really worried about people going in there specifically, you know, and, you know, kids aren't going to be going by and seeing, hey, that's the big, you know, marijuana store, you know? I thought there was some good points in the Board of Select meeting about signage, which we can deal with obviously as well.
So just so clear, that's to change it to, from facility to facility as an alternative to the property lines?
Right.
As the state has it?
Right.
What do you mean by as the state? I didn't quite follow that.
The thought that the state of the town didn't zone something different, they would look at it 500 feet from the door, closest point of the facility to the closest point of the abutting facility.
And I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you, Suzanne.
Oh, I was just going to say, and you're saying that is that for all allowed marijuana uses or just, it sounded like you were specifically going to one.
I mean, that's mostly for the, for the, for in the MOD. And if we deal with retail separately, then I wouldn't, I would maybe carve something out for that, change that, not, maybe that could be more restrictive. But just really, that's aimed at if in the MOD with Osgood, if we could keep those soccer fields available for use, I think that's a really good thing. And then lot size, I mean, we talked about lot size. I wouldn't really suggest limiting lot size unless anyone really has, I don't know, thoughts on that or even.
What are the, what are the rationales for, for doing, what, for lot size? Why would we want to consider?
Well, you typically have it, you know, lot sizes in most zoning areas, it's a minimum. And you don't have, with the exception of like something like floor area ratio, you don't have anything in your zoning bylaw that's a maximum, you know, that, you know, it's, because it's all proportional to the size of the parcel. And the floor area ratio, we'll keep it in mind, so it, you know, if we restricted the usage to a maximum amount of square footage, it would be, it would just be different than anything else we've done. I mean, you could, if you wanted to, you know, you could do something like. we've done. I mean, you could, if you wanted to, you know, you could do something like per, you know, each tranche of a use, as something scaled up, would have to require a special permit. I mean, that's, you could do it that way. I presume the law would be that way. Like if, you know, again, I don't want to use 1600 as example, because it's broader than that, but the concept would be, is if they came in and asked for, you know, a permit for a certain sized facility, we would grant them that. But then, if they came in a year or two later for more, it would be a separate permit.
Agreed. And, and given what they're kind of talking about, and there, there could be small offices doing, you know, testing and stuff like that, I, I don't really, which would need special individual, individual special permits.
Yeah.
I think we lose out by kind of setting minimum lot sizes, you know, and again, that would all be part of the special permit granting criteria, you know. You want something that's going to be appropriate and successful, you could do that as part of the special permit.
Although, in the area of retail, you might have a-
For re, yes, yes, for retail, I, I would treat retail differently. I think I'd treat retail like we do treat normal retail, and there might be floor area ratios, there might be minimum, because we don't, you don't want the corner pop shop, you know, you want it to actually be something appropriate. And then, the only, two other things that I kind of added were that I do think for our special permit findings, that we would add some language. I don't have suggested language, but about lighting, odor control, electrical use, security, and just kind of make sure that we add all of those as things that we want to deal with.
Yeah, I think we need to get everything in there, and hiring consultants, and all the things that, you know.
If we do wind up having something for retail and having it as an allowed use in limited areas and setting along criterias, I would add that I think any retail store should have to be 21-plus to enter. So not even going in with a parent, not even over 18. You have to be 21 or older to go in. You can't go in, if you're 18, and buy a bong or something like that, or buy, you have to be 21 to go in. And not that I think there would be drive-through, but that just seems like a bad idea to-
Colorado, I think that's how it is in Colorado. You actually have to have an ID, and it's, it's, it ain't nothing to walk through the door, you have to.
Right. I mean, I know that a lot of, actually, cities and towns are doing that with tobacco stores. So I know in, in Beverly, our Board of Health, where I work, passed an order and said, if you're going to sell flavored tobacco, you have to be 21-plus, so that it's not marketed towards children. And I think that's a, kind of a good idea, if, retail was allowed. If retail's not allowed, then it's all, then it doesn't matter.
Right.
But if it is, those would be kind of important safeguards. And those kind of, just kind of thoughts on the bylaw.
So, just going back to the, you know, number 14, you know, if burning is needed, that presumably that would be as part of a research laboratory testing, and so that might be combined with an incineration requirement-
Right.
-to remove all particulate before it's exhausted.
Definitely. Do you guys-
Some sort of laboratory standard.
Right. As I recall from your project, there was no live burning, right?
We've been having discussions with impairment companies. There's, it's always a potential, we haven't made it that far down to-
So the cultivation, the-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The question was R and D or cultivation?
Cultivation.
No, absolutely not.
Right. The cultivation manufacturing, that one, but, but there is the possibility of an R and D, you know, if you're testing for a device that's going to measure, you know, impairment, that actually, there may be some burning involved. And I could, I could definitely see that, and just, we need to craft something to make sure that that's-
Just some type of laboratory standard-
Right.
-where you're incinerating whatever is exhausted to a standard.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we want that in, in terms of- Going to the soccer field.
In terms of an emission.
The cloud, yeah.
An initial, a laboratory emission standard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would make the games interesting.
Great soccer field. It's called more, it's on Osgead, which better.
Yeah. But yes, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Suzanne, any comments on-
The only thing I would say about the burning issue is that you, it's important to keep in mind that the regulations for this use has not been promulgated yet, so I, I would assume that those regulations will be dealing with a lot of those issues.
I would, I would think so, hopefully.
And that any type of use will have to comply with those, and they'll be, you know, they would be incorporated into these zoning bylaws.
So, and just, just on the timing, I mean, it kind of segues at the timing. Again, not to speak for the Board of Selectmen, but the distinct impression I got from the meeting was that, from the meeting last night, was that they would really not be open to a special town meeting. I think, given the timeline that we're currently on, I, so settle on, I'd project this for the regular town meeting. So just to keep in mind.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, it feels to me, and I think it would be better as an open, transparent process, where we treat everybody potentially as an applicant exactly the same. We do it at the regular town meeting, and will give us more time to get town input and educate people, so I think it's much better that way.
And get discussion about, you know, the, the retail guy. The Board of Selectmen have talked about it, we've talked about it. It would be nice to hear from people and from experts about, why is it good? Why is it bad? Why doesn't it matter? Is it like, you know, alcohol? Is it like a liquor store? Is it completely different than a liquor store? I mean, I think we, I agree with you, Peter. We all have our kind of gut instincts on that, but no data, no facts, no even anecdote. So that would definitely be great. And to Suzanne's point, getting something from the CCC about how you should treat, you know, burning, that would certainly be nice to have before we finalize.
Also, we, in, in closing, in the Board's packet, we had made, made some changes to the bylaw that were reflective of the discussions that have been going on, and I don't know if we also want to go through those, too. And I can give you sort of an overview of that?
Yeah, why don't you do that, just so we can get around it?
So just so you, yeah, so you can understand what it is. So we did, we sort of changed up the-
Is this your version of it?
Yes, yep, yep. The one thing that we did is, in 814-6, is we did put in a provision there that there's, I wanted, we wanted to clarify what the special permit would be, when a special permit would be required. So we added a provision in there that any marijuana use, where somebody's applying for a special permit is, will be considered a new use, so that there's no sort of issues about whether it's a pre-existing use that they're coming in for. So that was one of them. And then, the other one that we did in, it's on page five, and it's a part of the site plan review requirements, is that we just made sure that the term "site" is used throughout this bylaw, and we included that it would have the same meaning as lot, plot, or parcel, because they're all sort of used interchangeably. And I just wanted to clarify that. And I think those were our two sort of changes that are substantive, that I wanted to make sure that the board just, you know, we just had some discussion, and we can incorporate the other changes, if you would like, with Eton's changes, and so the next time around, we can have that start.
And I just wanted to comment on Eton's number 10, where he's talking about it's set 814-9 at the end. And, you know, add some language, lighting, odor control, electric security. This, I think, also perhaps gets a little bit to the building inside the building discussion that we've had recurring, and some sort of language that allows for development of technology and best practices, but still gives some type of guideline there.
So would you like something in there that says that that's required?
Well, we've, we've talked about this at least twice now, and I think there's a concern that we don't tie ourselves to technology that may become obsolete. And I think that's important. But, you know, if we had an applicant coming in who, you know, spends a lot of time showing the board, here's how we're going to address your controls with a building inside a building, and reassures us. And then, after the fact, says, well, we decided not to, we're just planting. That, that would be a problem for me. And so, what sort of enforcement mechanism do we have, but also is flexible enough to allow that as that best practice, right now, that's a best practice, as that best practice evolves to perhaps better technology, we can then embrace that. Now, I, I don't know how you balance that out, but-
But isn't it a little bit, sort of, almost, that's a, an issue that we have to deal with in, in today's environment, that we, we approve a special permit subject to a set of conditions, and those would be the conditions, and if there's a material change in that, you'd have to come back anyway. I mean, you know.
And it's based on the site plan submitted to the board. And so typically, you incorporate that site plan-
Yeah, I mean, I think a little bit the difference would be, is our site plan review, what triggers it is incremental parking. Maybe we have to make a little bit clearer that what would trigger this is a change in any of the existing conditions of approval. Yeah.
And be, when we do, if, when, sometime down the road, when these come up, be really specific about what you're approving, right? Like, you're approving the, you know, building within a building. Like, if we're really specific in what it is that we like or, and require, then, you know, they can know that-
And I guess what I'm searching for a little bit, is there, is there any way to have a sort of an anchor to that here? And I don't quite know how to structure that.
I don't know, Suzanne.
But, but if, if what you did is you approved something subject to all the plans and documents and stuff, so that you're approving something very specific, very tangible, and then you have a provision that if there's any material changes, you have to come back. I mean, does that, does that do it, or are you looking for something more?
I like that, but what if the plans that come to us don't happen? And now we're in the-
Well, we can, we can, we can reject it because it's incomplete application.
Well, why is it incomplete if it's not required?
But isn't, isn't the point of the building within a building to meet the different air quality and water and all of the other issues that are already laid out there? I think if we hit enough of the other issues that we've thought through, in terms of what they need to prove to us, and the building within the building is just the mechanism by which they're hitting that. So I think if we've got those other issues that we care about laid out clearly enough, then whether the building within the building is still the, the right standard by the time somebody comes in for with a special permit or not, you know, they will be, hopefully, presenting us with the best technology, the most efficient way to hit those standards, if it's building within a building or otherwise. That's how I look at it.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I have to say, I do worry about a situation, which maybe would never happen, but someone coming and coming with plans and asserting, well, we don't need that, we're going to be fine. And then, how do we argue, no, that's not good enough?
Yes, well, we also, besides our power, I think we have, there's a host agreement, so I think we can also tell, talk, not that we negotiate them, but give our feelings about whether something's appropriate.
Right. And, but I think there's also, you know, a provision in our due diligence process that says we have the right to hire consultants to do that. Because, I mean, I think it's, this is just a highly accentuated version of what we do anyway. And, you know, because after all, we have engineers coming from us, in front of us, saying, look, this is what's going to happen, and we have to validate whether that's true or not.
Let me, let me give a smaller example. We had a, what I think was intended to be a very sort of collaborative conversation about a driveway near the lake, and about make sure we're using best practices. But what is the best practice? And are you pushing too hard?
Yeah.
And I, I kind of like what Jennifer's saying, to have a standards-based system. I think we have to be pretty clear on the standards for odor control, water consumption, security, that give us the basis to then say, no, here's why we're saying the best practice has to be better, in order to meet these standards.
Are you looking for something in addition to the regulations? If the regulations are, are as thorough as the medical marijuana that we have based the MMOD on, are you looking for something in addition to that, or do you think that will satisfy your concerns?
Not sure.
Well, I, I mean, a little bit, one of the things, and I'd be interested, everybody's feeling this, is that if you think about it, under the, if we do subdivisions, we have the Planning Board rules and regulations governing the subdivisions. It's actually not part of the zoning bylaw, but it's sort of adjunct to it. And then we have, like, site plan review that lists a bunch of requirements if you submit something. The question here is, do we put in our bylaw every single requirement for this, or do we actually, can we create something like Planning Board rules and regulations for this sort of thing, that's maybe a little bit more detailed?
Well, you're acting as the special granting, special permit granting authority under your, under the zoning act, and not under the subdivision rules and regulations. So you're not acting to subdivision control law, which gives you that authority to have regulations to deal with those issues. So I would, I would suggest that the best practice is probably to include it in your zoning bylaw, as opposed to having regulations. I'm not quite sure you have the, that authority to issue substantive regulations under the zoning act.
I would say we, at least until we see regulations from the state, that we kind of try to be broad, identify on what kinds of categories, where you're concerned about odor, concerned about water, concerned about electricity, concerned about security. Special permit applicants, you're going to have to convince us that you've dealt with all of those, and whether it's that you're using best practices, and that you're, you know, making sure that everyone in the neighborhood and town is safe. I'm not sure how much more specific we can get until we get state regulations.
I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, or Jen, I, I'm not disagreeing, but I'm, I'm just trying to explore, and I don't want to take up too much more of our time exploring. But is, is the nature of the document such that if you did what you just said, does it help to then have language such as a structure within a structure? Or does that just muddy things?
I mean, you can always kind of put in including but not limiting, limited to, and giving ideas, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, at some point, I think you have to be careful about being overly prescriptive, because you reach a point in time as you return, and-
I agree. So I appreciate everyone's patience, as I've sort of explored this, you've heard the concern, and we'll see what we can do.
And we can look, in the interim, between now and the next meeting, we can look at other jurisdictions that do have legalized marijuana, to see what they've done. But we haven't quite seen anything like you're looking for, but there may be.
Peter, a quick question. Are, in terms of the standards that you're speaking of, are you looking for something that's, that's more prescribed or specific versus, like, say, our, our industrial zoning? Which, which, I think, if I remember correctly, it's, it's fairly vague that you have, you know, that there's no odor issues, there's no environmental issues, air quality. It's, it's pretty vague. You're looking for something very much more specific than-
I actually think I'm pretty open to what solution might be used here. So I don't have a specific approach in mind. What, what I, the approach I have is, look, the applicant has to balance meeting requirements with cost, right? They should. And so they're going to be under pressure to reduce their costs and not overbuild. And my concern is that we're going to be under pressure to say, okay, we, we know you're going to do that, but we need to meet a standard. And at some point, we, how do we draw that line? That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I think what we might want to do is just start with the less of the things, the areas we want to consider. There might end up being in some of those areas, like, you know, industry standard, like they are with the fire and stuff like that. And, you know, maybe it'll just pop out, but let's start with the list and then see how prescriptive we can get without straitjacking ourselves.
You know, it's a good point. If it was a fire issue, we'd have NFPA. But although they expand way beyond fire, I don't think they've expanded into cannabis cultivation yet.
At least for now.
But that's actually, you know, we, we rely on those kind of standards.
Yeah.
And we don't have them right now for this. don't have them right now for this. So what do we do? And, and if it was a small facility that we, you know, think we might be dealing with, what's the big deal? But if it's not a small facility, it is a big deal. You know, to, to get it right.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's funny, because, you know, to, to draw an analogy of work, you know, we do a lot of, you know, outsourcing of like our software applications, and you get into information risk issues, and you always ask if they're ISO compliant or something like that, and I think that's what you're sort of saying, yeah. What do you say?
Okay, so, for the next meeting, we're going to be looking, we'll bring you some more information, and do, does the board consider that you looked at all the questions, or are there more questions? So we have that list, we have the five, what is it, five, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think we actually used a lot of that to frame our thinking already. I mean, I think we've sort of, or vector again, I don't think we've closed on all of them, so maybe it might be useful next time to go back and do that.
Okay.
I think the one that somewhat got skipped was the uses in terms of the underlying, both of these parcels have an overlying, so we have the OSGAD on, on 1600 OSGAD, and we have adult entertainment on the.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do, we haven't gone into that in excruciating detail, but I think that would be good to come into that the next time. I mean, it's, I, it's actually sort of tangential, it makes everything neat, but, you know, it, it, we definitely have to address it, so, yeah. So, okay, anything else from the board?
Yes, Mr. Larry. Would it be possible to have that working group session to, to discuss some of the comments we had put in there at the last meeting with respect to the bylaw? There was, I think, eight or nine comments.
So do we have them here? I, I just, I just don't have them in front of me.
We do have them, not in hard copy.
I mean, what would you like us, what's your request?
Oh, it, well, I'm sorry, so at the last meeting we had discussed, because it was just a handful of things that might be best discussed in a working group, to, to schedule a brief working group to go through these, these comments, and.
So, Dan, my, my concern here is, on the one hand, the applicant brings expertise to the concept of a working group, right? So that's the idea. But on the other hand, from my perspective, I would rather see the applicant making those contributions of expertise in an open public forum at the planning board. And if there's a working group, it'd be, you know, of the members, and then we engage in the open forum, and unless I'm missing something, I, I think that serves you better.
I, I agree, I think we could just probably take these up at the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Just looking at them.
Yeah.
Because we want your expertise, but I think we ought to be careful how we do that.
Sure, no, thank you, we just wanted to make sure they weren't, their points weren't lost, just because there, there, there's only a few points that were material to the business model that we proposed and walked through, that could be handled very quickly at a future meeting, so, thank you.
And I think we've dealt with several of them already.
Exactly, great, exactly, thanks.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else from the board? Chris, do you have any imparting shots here? Think we're going in the right direction?
I think keeping it all, I think you're facing the same challenge we all are, which is trying to keep it focused and on track, and dealing with the unknowns, and ultimately, some of this is going to be based upon things that we don't know, but I think it's all under our control to shape it the best we can with what we know now, and keep that door open, as I think Town Council said, and try to be responsive. So I appreciate where you're going, and let's see where we are in the coming weeks, you know? Thank you.
Good, excellent. Okay, great, good job, good job, thank you.
Okay, excited?
So we're on to our other favorite topic.
Well, we have one before, so the peer review consultants, I think some of you know that our stormwater review consultant, who we had for many years, Lisa Eggleston from Eggleston Environmental, retired in, I believe, the spring, so in the interim, she had finished up some projects she had been working on, and then we have been using TEC to do both stormwater engineering. In the meantime, we've sent out a request for proposal to do both engineering review as well as stormwater, because we definitely want to separate it, we want to make sure we always have a backup in the event this happens again. So we've received those proposals, Jennifer Hughes and I have gone through them, we've reached out for references, and she made a recommendation to the Conservation Commission at her last hearing, and I have the information for you as well. So on the stormwater side, what we'd like to do is actually engage with two consultants and rotate them for at least six months, so that we can get a good sense of what they provide. One of them is called SSD Engineering, he's actually picked up a lot of Lisa's accounts, so he's out of Framingham, Mass, and we reached out to Lisa, she recommended Favorable, and she encouraged us to call the Town of Dedham, we spoke with their conservation agent, and she also recommended Favorable. So I like that he doesn't have to work in town, that he doesn't know all the players, that I think that allows a real independent review. Horace Lee Witten also provided a stormwater review, and they also have not been before many town boards. Our CG actually used him on the first parking lot expansion program they had, but other than them, I don't remember them coming before the board. So we'd like to rotate through them for probably six months and get a good evaluation, maybe we'll want to stick with two, maybe we'll want to go to one, but I'd like to leave it open. And we'd like to continue with TEC on the civil side. As you know, stormwater just is evaluated in a lot more projects than civil, so I think TEC will always be available to, to back it up, but for now, we'd like to keep it separate and go that route, so. And the Conservation Commission was okay with our presentation to them, so we share that reviewer, so it's very important that both boards are in sync on that review for the stormwater side.
I like the approach of the six-month almost trial period, get a feel for each and their experience and their capabilities.
And again, we're assuming they'll want to do that, so we're going to reach back out to them with our decision, and it may extend it for another six months, I mean, you just might not, we don't have a lobby for us right now for review purposes, so we might have to be extended six, so we may be able to make a decision at that time. Okay?
Okay, great.
As far as the master plan.
Good job.
November 2nd is the public forum, so please get that word out to all your networks. The committee's actively, they're putting up lawn signs now, the flyer's been handed out at the farmer's market, and that has concluded, but they're actively going to PTOs, the high school, they're engaging Merrimack College, they've tried to reach out to Edgewood and the senior center, and it's a little harder to get those groups together, but they're, they're just flat out working on getting the word out. The existing condition comment matrix deadline was, I believe, a week ago, so all of those have been submitted to the consultants, they're kind of going through those comments, segregating them out by section, and we hope to have a revised draft one week out from the public forum, and then we'll put that on the website, and we'll get that communication out, so.
And location and time again, I totally forgot.
The North End of a High School at 6:30 on November 2nd, so it's a Thursday night. At your November 7th meeting, which is the next one, you will have RKG, who's the master plan consultant, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, who is working on the regional housing plan, and Judy Barrett, who's working on the zoning diagnostics, so they'll all be here at the next meeting to give you an update on each project. So that'll have, meeting minutes.
Hold on, meeting minutes. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the October 3rd minutes?
Motion to approve October 3rd minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adjourn?